I'd like to welcome you all to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board, and thank you all for being here. This is the third of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units, subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect leases commencing between October 1st, 2024, and September 30th, 2025. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Doug Apple.
Present.
Hennessy Sakino.
Present.
Christina DeRose. Robert Erlich.
Present.
Arpit Gupta. Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Christina Smith.
Present.
Adan Soltran.
Present.
And Nestor Davidson, I am present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing to comment on the proposed guidelines on June 11th at Adler Hall at the New York Society for Ethical Culture, 2 West 64th Street in Manhattan, from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM. Anyone who wants to speak, excuse me, anyone who wants to comment on the proposed guidelines at a public hearing must sign up to speak. People wishing to speak at the public hearings can pre-register in advance either through our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling 212-669-7480 from 9:00 AM through 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Pre-registration ends at noon on the business day prior to each hearing. For those who do not pre-register for the hearings, registration is also available at public hearings in person from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. All of our public hearings are livestreamed, and Spanish interpretation will be provided at each hearing. We also accept comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. You can submit written, audio, and video comments for the board to review through June 11th. Instructions on how to submit these comments will be available on the board's website at nyc.gov/rgb, by email at ask@rgb.nyc.gov, or by calling the RGB again at 212-669-7480. Our final vote on the guidelines will take place on Monday, June 17th, starting at 7:00 PM, at Assembly Hall at Hunter College, East 69th Street between Park and Lexington Avenues. The public may attend in person, or may watch the vote live by streaming it on the RGB's YouTube channel. To find out how, visit the RGB website, again, nyc.gov/rgb, or call the RGB at 212-669-7480 between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Before we begin, I would like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. If you wish to speak, you must confirm with RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. We have a Spanish interpreter here this evening. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance to let you know that you will be soon called on to speak. If you have materials to distribute to the board, please give them to the RGB staff at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep a track of time, we have a clock. We will start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once the speaker has 30 seconds left. We'll continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony, and I appreciate your cooperation. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to try to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. Oh, and if you pre-registered, please still register, please still check in at the registration desk so that we know that you're here. Thank you. And thank you for your cooperation, and the board is looking forward to hearing your comments regarding proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Liz.
Buenas tardes. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas de Alquiler de Nueva York. Esta es la tercera de las cuatro audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lofts, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres del 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos del 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1 de octubre del 2024 hasta el 30 de septiembre del 2025. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor responda si está presente. Doug Apple, Hennessy Sakino, Christina DeRose, Robert Erlich, Arpit Gupta, Alex Schwartz, Christina Smith, Adan Soltran, Nestor Davidson. Que consten actas que hemos logrado un quorum. La próxima reunión de esta junta será una audiencia pública para comentar sobre las normas propuestas. Se celebrará en la fecha y hora a continuación, el 11 de junio, en el Adler Hall del New York Society for Ethical Culture, ubicado en la 2 oeste de la calle 64 de Manhattan, de 5 hasta las 8 de la noche. Todo aquel que desee comentar sobre las normas propuestas en una audiencia pública debe inscribirse para declarar. Las personas que deseen declarar las audiencias públicas pueden pre-inscribirse con antelación. Puede pre-inscribirse en línea a través de nuestra página web, nyc.gov/rgb, o al llamar al 212-669-7480, de 9 hasta las 5 de la tarde de lunes a viernes. Esta pre-inscripción finalizará al mediodía del día laborable anterior a cada audiencia. Quienes no se pre-inscriban para las audiencias también podrán inscribirse en las audiencias públicas de 5 de la tarde hasta las 8 de la noche. Todas las audiencias públicas se transmitirán en directo. Habrá interpretación al español en cada audiencia. También recibiremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera de nuestras audiencias públicas. Puede presentar comentarios por escrito, audio, o video a la junta hasta el día 11 de junio. Las instrucciones para presentar esos comentarios estarán disponibles en el sitio web de la junta en nyc.gov/rgb, y, por correo electrónico, a ask@rgb.nyc.gov, o al llamar a la junta RGB al 212-669-7480. Nuestra votación final sobre las normas se llevará a cabo el lunes 17 de junio, a partir de las 7 de la noche, en el Assembly Hall del Hunter College, en la calle 69 este, entre las avenidas Park y Lexington. Las puertas se abrirán a las 6 de la tarde, y le animamos a llegar temprano para evitar retrasos y ayudar a agilizar la entrada de todos los miembros del público. Si no puede asistir en persona, se podrá seguir la votación a través de la transmisión en directo en el canal de YouTube de la RGB. Para informarse de cómo hacerlo, visite la página web del RGB, nyc.gov/rgb, o llame al RGB al 212-669-7480, entre las 9 de la mañana y las 5 de la tarde. Antes de continuar con los testimonios, me gustaría repasar las normas y procedimientos para quienes declaren ante la junta. Si desea declarar, deberá confirmar su presencia con el personal de la RGB en la mesa de inscripción situada cerca de la entrada de este salón. No se llamarán a aquellos que no se hayan inscrito con el personal de la mesa de inscripción. Tendremos una intérprete de español. Cuando se inscriba para hablar, notifíquela al personal si desea intérprete. Intentaré anunciar varios nombres con antelación para que sepa qué pronto se le llamará para declarar. Si tiene material para distribuirle a la junta, debe entregárselo al personal de la RGB, que se encuentra en la mesa de inscripción cerca de la entrada. Intentaré alternar los hablantes entre inquilinos y propietarios, pero no siempre será posible. Para darle cabida al número mayor posible de hablantes, cada hablante dispondrá de dos minutos para declarar. Se consideran dos minutos adicionales a los hablantes que utilizan servicios de interpretación. Para ayudar a los hablantes a controlar su tiempo, disponemos de un temporizador. Lo pondremos en marcha una vez que el hablante empieza a declarar. El temporizador sonará una vez que a los hablantes les quedan 30 segundos, y este seguirá sonando cuando se hayan agotado los dos minutos asignados. Si los hablantes siguen hablando después de los dos minutos, les pediremos que concluyan rápidamente su declaración. Esperamos que declaren muchos entre ustedes, y la junta desea escuchar al mayor número posible de hablantes en el tiempo limitado del que disponemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que quieran que oigamos en apenas dos minutos, pero, por favor, entiendan que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se hayan tomado el tiempo de venir aquí y declarar tengan la oportunidad de que se les escuche. Aún si se registraron, pueden inscribirse afuera para poder declarar aquí esta noche. Ahora, gracias por su colaboración. La junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus comentarios sobre las normas propuestas para el ajuste de los alquileres. Gracias.
Thank you so much, Liz. Our first three speakers will be the Honorable Crystal Hudson from the New York City Council, Leon Goldenberg, and Jared Watson.
Good evening. I just want to make a statement, but I'll be submitting longer written testimony. So, our city is facing a severe housing affordability crisis. It has resulted in poor and working-class New Yorkers moving out in droves, black and brown folks being displaced from the very communities they've worked to nurture over generations, and threaten the livelihoods of the vast majority of New Yorkers and the integrity of our city. Our policies should affirm life instability, yet sustained increases to rent-stabilized tenants run counter to this idea, overburdening people who are already severely and disproportionately rent-burdened, older adults on fixed incomes, poor and working-class families, longtime tenants, and our black and brown neighbors. Time and again, year after year, New Yorkers have made their opposition clear to the Rent Guidelines Board's proposed increases to rent-stabilized units. Yet, against their testimony and the backdrop of unprecedented inflation, this board has voted to increase rents for two consecutive years. This year, the board is supposed to inflict even more damage. Average inflation-adjusted wages fell 6% between 2022 and 2023. 20% of rent-stabilized tenants are food insecure or unable to afford either full or balanced meals at the least part of the time compared to 12% of market-rate renters. Evictions jumped 200% in 2023. The situation in our communities is dire. And as Chair of the Council's Committee on Aging, let me be clear. An increase of this magnitude, 2% to 4.5% for one-year leases, and 4% to 6.5% for two-year leases, which this body is proposing, is one that will force hundreds of thousands of older adults living in rent-stabilized units to spend even more of their fixed income on rent, the vast majority of whom are already moderately or severely rent-burdened. As is always the case, our black, brown, poor, and working-class communities will bear the brunt of your decision and will be among the first to be evicted. Rent-stabilized tenants have experienced immense rent increases in the last two years, the largest increases in nearly a decade. This year, it is more of the same. The mayor has been clear about where his loyalties lie, and it is not with poor New Yorkers, working-class New Yorkers, black and brown New Yorkers, older New Yorkers, or tenant New Yorkers. It is my hope that you will truly listen to what the vast majority of New Yorkers are telling you. The rent is already too damn high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you lower the mic stand a little bit? Lower the mic stand.
Just a little bit.
After this gentleman.
Thank you. Please. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes, please.
I am the operator and third-party manager of rent-stabilized buildings in New York City. Last year, you acknowledged that our income went down 8%, and yet you only gave us a 3% increase, based on the fact of what tenants can't afford. Let's be perfectly honest, you do not know what tenants can't afford, as you do not do a means test. If you would be willing to do a means test on our tenants, we would be willing to give a 2% increase, which the New York City requires of low-income co-ops as a minimum for tenants who can't afford it. But you can't give us the 8% increase.
Please, thank you. Please, continue.
On tenants who can't afford it. Without a means test for you to argue that tenants can't afford the rent is bogus. There is a means test in NYCHA Housing, so why not for rent-stabilized apartments? You are forcing rent-stabilized owners to walk from their buildings. You can look at the numbers. I am sure this will thrill the tenant advocates. If the city takes over our buildings, advocates will be thrilled, but they will get the same services as they do in NYCHA. NYCHA takes over a year to get an apartment fixed and spends $375,000 to get an apartment ready. NYCHA collects over $2,000 per apartment per month in rent and loses money, all while they are not paying real estate tax, water, and sewer charges, and no real insurance. I am old enough to remember the 90s, when RGB gave an increase of 4% for a one-year lease and 7% for a two-year lease, which started on day one of the new lease, and not as you did last year on the anniversary of lease one. And in fact, you lowered the rent increase to 2.75%. What the RGB did in the 90s was when a landlord had very low rent tenant, there was an additional increase of $20, $40, or $60.
Please, continue. We can hear you.
Over the initial rent increase. I think that tenants who are paying very low rents, can you hear this?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Say $500 to $900, and I have 139 that are paying less than $900. Many of them can afford that increase. I don't know for sure, but neither do you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Jared Watson?
And after Mr. Watson, just so folks know, our next three speakers will be Lacey Tauber, Esteban Geron, and Kayla Thomas. Please, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jared Watson. I am a tenant organizer at Fifth Avenue Committee, and I am a rent-stabilized tenant right here in Brooklyn. In my neighborhood, a Sunset Park, folks can't afford a big fat rent increase. We heard from the council member a whole bunch of data, all of which is true. I'll just say, for my part, you know, I pay over a third of my income for a pretty modest old rent-stabilized apartment on Fourth Avenue. I can't afford to pay all that much more, and our regular working-class folks, many of which, we have a lot of our members here tonight, I want you to look at them. So, we ask for a 0% increase, and fight, fight, fight!
House of New York, let's do the fight!
Thank you.
House of New York, let's do the fight!
Lacey Tauber?
Hi, my name is Lacey Tauber, and I'm here to testify in behalf of Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso, and in turn, on behalf of Brooklyn tenants. In this borough, it is increasingly difficult to find an affordable apartment. If you're one of the lucky ones who live in a rent-regulated unit already, it's hard to continue to afford it. New York City's vacancy rate is the lowest it's been since 1968, and fewer apartments are available across all rent levels, meaning it's especially difficult right now for low and moderate-income New Yorkers to find and secure housing. Meanwhile, rents have increased more than 9% in the last two years and are continuing to go up. And the families who are leaving the city at the fastest rate are people of color, who make between $32,000 and $65,000 a year, according to the New York Times. Those people would qualify for affordable housing at about 30% to 50% of the area median income, but are not building nearly enough new affordable housing at those levels to meet the need. Meanwhile, the area median income for New York City has increased 30% since 2021, yet I think we would be hard-pressed to find anyone in this room whose wages have increased 30% in that same amount of time. The result is that almost 30% of Brooklynites are experiencing severe rent burden, meaning they pay over 50% of their household income on rent. I said this last year, and I'll reiterate, we're talking hundreds of thousands of people, including rent-regulated tenants, just in this borough, choosing between paying rent and affording essentials. For all those reasons, keeping rent-regulated units affordable is one of the most important tools we have to keep the city vibrant and diverse. Yet, the board is considering a proposal that would put the total rent increase since 2020 at over 12% for one-year leases and almost 20% for two-year leases. Again, we would be hard-pressed to find anyone whose wages have kept up with that kind of increase. Borough President Reynoso is calling on the board to reject the proposed rate increases and help ensure that Brooklynites can stay in the borough we love, raise their families here, and grow old here on a fixed income. His motto is that this should be a Brooklyn for all, and with your help, it can stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Esteban Geron. I serve on the Board of Tenants PAC, and I'm a proud member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant, and I live literally a block away. I want to extend a warm welcome to the Honorable Tenant Members of the Board, Adan and Hennessys. Nice to see you. Welcome to Crown Heights. For the rest of you, I extend nothing but contempt and disgust at seeing you sitting on a stage in our neighborhood. And not even all of you here, you're missing two people. Ridiculous. Since your boss has already told you how much he's going to raise the rent, and has the lowest approval rating of any mayor in recent memory, you may want to warn him that no amount of real estate money is going to save him from being a one-term mayor if we get anything but a rent freeze or a rent rollback. It's clear that, like our mayor, you hate poor people, and you hate people of color. Now, as you cowards attempt to sneak out of here so you don't have to face your victims, I want you to look up and see Ebbets Field to your left. Tivoli Towers directly in front of you, and all of the rent-stabilized buildings along Franklin Avenue, mine included. I want you to understand that there are real people living in these apartments, elders and families who have called Crown Heights home for generations, that you will be effectively expelling from this city. I pray that, well, the five of you, really seven of you, Nestor, Arid, Alex, Doug, Robert, and both Christinas, never again know a moment of peace in this city, that every single New Yorker, that every single New Yorker affected by your cruel decision stops you at the train, on the street, at a restaurant, to call you out for the harm you've caused. Know that your children and grandchildren will look back in shame at your hateful racist legacy. And to my fellow tenants in the audience, never forget that your rent went up because Eric Adams doesn't give a shit about you. Real estate has paid, and now we're going to get played. And I end with a simple heartfelt chant. Please loudly repeat after me. Fuck you, Nestor!
Fuck you, Nestor!
One more time. Fuck you, Nestor!
Fuck you, Nestor!
Thank you, and good night.
I'm Kayla Thomas, a 27-year-old born and raised New Yorker, currently living in Crown Heights, sharing a five-bedroom, two-bath apartment with four other rent-paying adults. We're all just barely making ends meet. After receiving my rent history in the mail, I learned that in 2015, the rent of my apartment unit was $840 a month. This was back when it was a rent-stabilized two-bedroom unit with a real living room and a real kitchen. When I moved in during the summer of 2022, the unit's rent sat at $4,000 a month. That is a 376% increase. This significant rise, which continues to jump year by year, does not come with any additional benefits to me. In actuality, the living conditions have starkly declined over time. We have struggled with vermin, leaks which have destroyed my downstairs neighbor's ceiling, a broken doorknob that locked me inside my apartment for five hours with a fire escape that does not work, and more. Every technician comments that building renovations were done poorly and cheaply. My landlord and management company have cut costs while pocketing money and failing to maintain their 1,200 units across 85 buildings and four boroughs. A total of 14,841 complaints have been filed against them to 311. Furthermore, New York City Open Data shows that 89% of units in New York City are owned by corporations like this one. Those of us with sense know better than to buy into false narratives that the landlord lobby continues to propagate. For the vast majority of cases, housing in this city is not about small immigrant landlords struggling to survive, it is about developers and large management companies lining their pockets while forcing primarily working-class, black and brown New Yorkers to live in undignified conditions, forcing them out. By allowing the rent to rise, you bring shame to your communities and to yourselves. This is what you will be remembered for.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Anna Reyes, Patricia Martinez, and Samantha Bravo.
Patricia Martinez, mi nombre. Mi nombre es Patricia, y vivo en Sunset.
[inaudible]
Okay. Patricia Martinez. Mi nombre es Patricia Martinez, y vivo en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York.
My name is Patricia Martinez, and I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York.
Soy miembro de Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn.
I'm a member of the Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn.
Soy madre soltera. Lamentablemente, casi todos mis ingresos se van en el pago de la renta.
I am a single mother, and unfortunately, the majority of my income goes to paying rent.
Quiero decirles que la situación en situación de algunos inquilinos no tienen trabajo o no tienen dinero para la comida porque tienen que pagar el alquiler.
I would like to comment that the situation of a lot of tenants is that either they do not have work, or they do not have enough money to eat because they have to pay rent.
Yo estoy aquí para hablarles de cómo me afecta psicológicamente el aumento de la renta.
I'm here to talk to you about how this will affect me, specifically, an increase in rent.
Renta me afecta psicológicamente por no convivir con mi hijo y mi familia, la cual me pone depresiva.
The rent increase affects me psychologically because I'm not able to live with my son and my family, and this affects me deeply.
Me afecta mucho ya que mi madre se enferma, y aunque yo sé que la salud viene primero, a veces me pregunto qué pasaría si yo me enfermo, quién pagaría la renta.
So, my mother is also sick, and sometimes I have to think to myself, you know, it's understandable that rent is, excuse me, that health is so much more important, but what's going to happen if I get sick? How is the rent going to get paid?
Yo soy la única que trabaja y aporta dinero en la casa.
I am the only one that works and contributes money to the household.
Por tal razón estoy aquí para decirles que no estoy de acuerdo con el aumento de la renta.
Those are all the reasons why I'm here to tell you I do not agree with the rent increase.
Pido de aumento la renta un 0%.
Instead of increasing the rent, I'm asking for 0%.
Thank you.
Gracias.
One, two, three, four, rent increases, no more! One, two, three, four, rent increases, no more!
Do we have, thank you, thank you. Do we have, do we have Anna Reyes?
Anna Reyes?
Anna Reyes?
Anna Reyes?
Anna Reyes?
Okay. Samantha Bravo? Please.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Bravo, and I am a member of Brooklyn Tenants United. I have a question for all of those in the panel. Have you ever had to apply for rental assistance because you cannot afford your rent? Have you ever received an eviction notice? If you have not, then you can ask many of the tenants here what it's like. The frustration of not being able to pay your rent, the anguish and fear of losing your apartment, the hopelessness that one feels. Sunset Park, like most neighborhoods in New York City, is filled with low-income residents who work all day to be able to have a roof over their head. And even with a roof over their head, their apartments often need repairs, and their apartments do not have heat or hot water. To pay much more for an apartment that lacks the basic necessities such To pay much more for an apartment that lacks the basic necessities such as hot water and heat?
And garbage cans.
And garbage cans is like pouring money down the drain, right? It's an investment with no return. It's an insult to tenants, and the tenants feel cheated. Your actions have consequences, but those consequences will be affecting us, the tenants. Sitting here and every single tenant in New York City, there will be more people seeking help to pay off their rent arrears and even more people in housing court with eviction notices. And I am with all tenants here for a 0% rent increase. Actually, I'm asking for a rent rollback, so... What do we want?
Rent rollback, rent rollback, rent rollback!
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Christopher Atheneos, Mai Schatz, and Michael Hollingsworth.
Wait, she was before you, actually, Ms. Reyes.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Yes, Ms. Anna Reyes.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Anna Reyes.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Anna Reyes.
Soy miembro de Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn y recientemente vivo en Bay Ridge, Brooklyn, New York.
I'm a member of the Brooklyn Tenants United group, and I am recently living in Bay Ridge, Brooklyn, New York.
Hoy estoy aquí por la misma razón que lo hice los años anteriores y que muy probablemente haré los años siguientes.
Today, I am here for the same reasons that I had in previous years and that I will most likely do in the following years.
Cada año les expresamos a ustedes, miembros de la junta de directrices, la infinidad de injusticias y acoso por parte de los arrendatarios hacia nosotros, los inquilinos, para desalojarnos de nuestros hogares utilizando todo tipo de métodos para lograrlo, a pesar de pagarles el alquiler mes tras mes.
Every year, we express to you, the members of the Guidelines Board, the countless injustices and harassment by landlords towards us, the tenants, to evict us from homes using all types of methods to achieve this despite paying them rent month after month.
Aún no les es suficiente la cantidad que pagamos por los apartamentos, que los arrendatarios alegan que el aumento es para arreglar los apartamentos, y eso es mentira. Nunca contestan para resolver los problemas que hay en los apartamentos. No arreglan si hay daños o servicios sin funcionar en los apartamentos.
The amount we pay for the apartments is still not enough. The owners claim that the increase is to fix the apartments, and that is a lie. They never respond to solve the problems in the apartments. They do not fix anything if there are damages or services that are not working inside the apartments.
Yo, al igual que muchas de las personas que hoy estamos aquí, tenemos dos trabajos para poder pagar la renta, que es cada vez más difícil pagar, paso más tiempo en el trabajo que en el apartamento donde vivo.
I, like many of the people here today, have two jobs to be able to pay the rent, which is increasingly difficult to pay. I spend more time at work than at the apartment where I live.
Duermo pocas horas, lo cual me afecta física, mental, y emocionalmente, lo cual hace más difícil concentrarme en mis estudios, lo cual también cada día nos aísla por no tener tiempo para nuestras familias y amigos o para sentarse con ellos a comer a la mesa.
I sleep a few hours, which affects me physically, mentally, and emotionally, which makes it more difficult to concentrate on my studies, which also isolates us every day because we do not have time for our families and friends or to sit with them and eat at a table.
Esos son los lujos que no podemos tener gracias a los incrementos de renta que ustedes han aprobado y los inquilinos hemos pagado mes a mes. Hemos hecho muchos sacrificios para poder, poder seguir teniendo un hogar. Yo les pregunto a todos ustedes, qué sacrificios han hecho ustedes para poder aprobar los aumentos de renta?
These are luxuries that we cannot have thanks to the rent increases that you have approved and the tenants have paid month after month. We have made many sacrifices to be able to continue having a home. I ask you, what sacrifices have you made to be able to approve the rent increases?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gracias.
My building this year required yet again another Band-Aid on the facade, which cost over $50,000. Rather than replace the bricks as the public school did two blocks away from me or the co-op building did six blocks away, I had to just fix the cracks and patch them with mortar. It's not the most thorough job, but it is the cheapest. And sadly, the cheapest is the only thing that we can afford with all of the other increased operating expenses such as insurance, water in sewer, and taxes. We also spent about $30,000 three years ago on the same job. Unfortunately, with a building that's about 100 years old, we can't afford to spend $2 million like the public school or the co-op to replace the entire facade. We can't finance it either with the sky-high insurance rates. We can't wait 20 years either to squirrel away some of the money and pay for a new facade. The damage to the interiors of the apartments require immediate action, so patchwork is what we do. Since COVID, we have one tenant who has received a year's, has received a year's rent paid through ERAP. She continued to stop painting after that. She hasn't qualified for rent relief from the government so far, and the legal fees keep mounting. She owes $25,000 that could be put towards building improvements. The PIAC has not been updated in quite some time, taking into account gas inspections and repairs, energy mandates, and new lead paint inspections required to be completed by 2025. It costs an average of $500 per apartment to XRF an apartment. For some apartment, that's about half or a third of the monthly rent. That's just the testing. It doesn't cover any abatement, which can run into the tens of thousands. So as apartments come up with the new lead paint requirements, they'll sit empty, waiting to be in compliance, while we have to decide between repairing the facade, abating the lead paint, and putting an apartment back on the market or paying the insurance bills. Every month, there are decisions to be made. The Board does not take into consideration the age of the buildings, the frequency of repairs, new mandates, or most importantly, being able to preserve and maintain these buildings for our renters. While the Board weighs income affordability, I hope you consider what detrimental effects you will do to the conditions of the housing with inadequate increases, which unfortunately have been the norm over the years due to the politicizing of this critical infrastructure. Please pass an increase commensurating with what it takes to operate, maintain, and improve in buildings that are over 100 years old. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At the Board, at the front desk. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mai, will be Mai Schatz. Thank you. Please, thank you.
No, they can have the time, it's okay.
Thank you, thank you. Please, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Mai Schatz, and I'm a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union. I live right up the road on Pacific Street. I've lived in Crown Heights for over six years and in my current rent-stabilized apartment for over three and a half years. My neighbors and I live in a crumbling building where our bathroom ceilings are constantly caving in, our wood floors have holes and soft spots, tenants deal with mice, roaches, and other pests every day, and the elevator for our six-floor building has been out for almost two months now. Elderly tenants and tenants with disabilities are trapped in the building and unable to attend doctor's appointments or even accomplish necessary tasks like grocery shopping and laundry because they can't use the stairs. Since the elevator outage began, multiple people have fallen down the stairs and injured themselves, including the aide of one elder tenant who can't himself climb the stairs. Our landlord hasn't communicated with us about the situation in over a month, but mentioned offhand to one tenant that we will be without an elevator until at least August. Our landlord, our landlord, our landlord refuses to make legally required repairs or to provide reasonable accommodations, and thanks to the decisions of this Board, our rents are still consistently climbing while the conditions in our apartments only get worse. Despite all of this, I'm supposed to consider myself lucky, lucky that I have a house at all, that I'm rent-stabilized in spite of the decades-long assault on rent stabilization across this city. I consider myself lucky even though my food service job and the rent increases this Board has approved have me paying over 40% of my income in rent. I'm considered lucky because the housing crisis in the city and country is so dire and because landlord's right to make a profit seems to somehow always trump people's right to live in dignity. Those in power in New York should be embarrassed by the way your housing policies, including these untenable yearly rent increases, have led to a loss of 40% of the Black population in Crown Heights since the Bloomberg era. Tenants and working-class people are what makes this city great, not to mention make it run at all or make it a city anyone actually wants to live in. And you have a responsibility to stop this cycle of displacement and gentrification and keep people in their homes. I urge this Board to reverse course and freeze or rollback the rent.
Thank you.
Roll back, roll back, roll back!
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Every year, this Board turns its back on renters, so I'm going to turn my back to them. And also, if they are so inclined, they can kiss my ass. So my name is Michael Hollingsworth. I'm a lifelong Brooklynite. I am, I live here in Crown Heights, so welcome to my neighborhood. And I'm going to talk to you. In August of 2022, after this Board, at the direction of Eric Adams, hit us with the largest rent increase in almost a decade, I was at a tenant association, association meeting, and an older Black woman came up to me, and she asked, well, first she said she can't afford the hike. And then she asked me, and I will never forget this, she looked at me and she said, is there anything Eric Adams can do to help us? Right? Right? And I didn't want to tell her that that would essentially be us asking the arsonists to come back and put out the fire, right? But it was actually a teaching moment because at that meeting, I found out none of the tenants there, there were about 20 tenants, all Black, working class, Eric Adams' base, they, none of them knew about the RGB. They didn't know what it does, they didn't know the mayor controls it. By the end of the meeting, they all knew that. And to a person, every one of them said they were not voting for Eric Adams again. And I'm telling this story because I think it's important for us, folks who show up here every year, to not just do this. What we have to do over the course of the next year is we need to go, in other words, this is not, our fight is not in here, right? Our fight is in our buildings, it's in our blocks. Right? Well, that, yeah. And also, we don't need to really talk to them, these people behind us, we need to be talking to our neighbors. And let them know how the Board works and more importantly, who controls it. Because the only way we're going to start getting the justice we're owed is if we get Eric Adams out of office.
Thank you.
So that's, that's your task.
Thank you.
And I still have a couple of seconds, so I want to just say something, I want, the last thing I want to say is I want to say thank you to our tenant reps. Thank you for being part of this process, even though it's a sham. To the folks in the middle, I know you're just doing your job, whatever, but what I was taught, when I was a little kid, was that if a job isn't right, if it's immoral, you should quit.
Thank you.
And to the two landlord, the two landlord reps, I'm not sure if hell has a place for landlords, but if it does, I hope it's hot and I hope, I hope the tenants can hear you screaming in heaven.
Please wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next, our next three speakers will be Denise Clay, Isabel Munoz, and Camille Sosa. Denise Clay? Thank you.
I'm here as a tenant of an expiring 421A building for middle-income families in South Slope, and I'm here on behalf of my tenant association to ask for a 0% rent increase. Firefighter, public school teacher, social workers, nurses, nonprofit employees, retired folks who are on fixed incomes. These are the tenants who pay thousands of dollars each month into my building. Many have lived in the building for dozens of years. We pay our rent on time, we have pride in our homes. We keep up our end of the bargain. However, we are met with an owner and management company who actively neglects the building, who have a history of lying and deceiving tenants about their rent-stabilized status, having assigned illegal rioters for longer than the 11 years I've lived in the building that deceived them about their protections as rent-stabilized tenants. They've illegally asked for more money after leases have been signed. Our elevator has been out of service dozens of times in the last year, sometimes for weeks at a time, chronic leaks, accruing violation. We often hear landlords say they need a big increase so they can maintain the buildings. We've heard that tonight, in fact. However, this is simply not the case. We need garbage cans. The owners of my building have in fact actively worked to decrease their rent roll, warehousing a dozen units at highest count as they try to run down the clock of the 421A. When apartments do go on the market, the rent is far from affordable. One-bedroom apartments in our rent-stabilized building, which are not updated, are currently being listed for $3,100 a month. The rent roll is not the issue, the issue is greed. I teach my children who are eight and 10 the difference between right and wrong, and I'd like to ask you all tonight to please do the right thing, by myself, the folks in this room, and all of the rent-stabilized tenants in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Isabel Munoz. Soy madre y vivo en el 227 de la calle 23, en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York.
Hello, good evening. My name is Isabel Munoz. I am a mother, and I live at 227 23rd, no, 227, 223rd Street in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York.
Soy miembro del grupo Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn.
I'm a member of the Brooklyn Tenants United Group.
Hoy estoy aquí para, para hablarles del aumento de renta y me gustaría decirles a ustedes que no es justo que aumenten la renta.
Today, I am here to talk to you about the rent increase, and I would like to tell you that it is not fair that the rent increases.
El aumento de renta me afecta mucho ya que no convivo tiempo suficiente con mi familia, no asisto a las actividades de la, de la escuela con mis hijos, como viajes o reuniones de padres, me estoy perdiendo de momentos importantes y todo por tener que trabajar para poder ganar la renta.
The increase in rent affects me a lot since I do not spend enough time with my family. I do not attend school activities with my children such as trips or parent meetings. I am missing important moments and all because I have to work to pay the rent.
Me preocupa mucho y me afecta emocionalmente y económicamente.
It worries me a lot and affects me emotionally and financially.
Hoy estoy aquí para pedir que no aumente la renta.
Today, I am here to ask that the rent not increase.
Estoy aquí para pedir un 0%.
I am here to ask you for 0%.
Y también quiero comentarles.
I also want to add.
No es justo que aumenten la renta porque los, los dueños de los apartamentos no, no, no arreglan, no, uno se les pide de, que arreglen, no, no, no asisten y en mi, en mi caso, en mi apartamento, no, no trabaja bien la luz, en tiempo de verano se apaga mucho y él no lo arregla. Ya tenemos años así con ese problema y no es justo que lo aumenten la renta. Nosotros no, no estamos diciendo que no vamos a pagar renta pero que arreglen.
Un momento, señora. It's not fair for the landlords to come and ask for their rent to be increased when they're not actually making repairs, when they don't ask, they don't fix anything, and you ask them to do something and they do not do it. In my specific case, I have a light that just doesn't work in the summertime, and it's year after year that I ask them to fix it and it's not being fixed, and it's like, you know, why are they asking for an increase when they can't even fix something so simple?
Gracias.
Thank you. The next three speakers after Ms. Sosa will be Nora Guertero, Geraldine Sosa, and Christina Robas. Robles. Please go ahead. Thank you.
The greatest of, the greatness of a nation can be judged by the way it treats its weakest member. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Camille Sosa. I'm seventy years old and a resident of Sunset Park, Brooklyn. I'm also a member of the Brooklyn Tenants United Group. I stand here today to speak about the effects your decision on a rent increase can have on thousands of disadvantaged New Yorkers, with New York already having one of the highest populations of homelessness. It is only unavoidable that this number will rise with a rent increase, with thousands of New Yorkers already struggling to have a substantial way of living due to the prices. I've seen families that are broken down because of the inability to spend time within each other, mine included. New Yorkers would have to put work above family. Who is there to guide a child when their parents are too busy working to pay attention to them? Housing is a human right and it should be treated as such. In this economy, with the prices of basic necessities rising day by day, not everyone has the luxury to be able to afford such a raise. If landlords want an increase, they must be able to fulfill our needs, make repairs when we need them, and overall, stop harassment and the random evictions by which the stories here tonight have clearly not stopped. I therefore not just ask, but demand a no-rent increase. The decision is upon your hands and you must make the right one. What do we want? One? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Nora Huertero. Vivo en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York. Soy miembro de Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn.
Good evening. My name is Nora Huertero, and I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn. I am a member of Brooklyn Tenants United.
Durante años venimos pidiendo que no se aumente la renta. Los propietarios han dicho que este aumento es necesario, ya que tienen que hacer reparaciones y mantenimiento de los edificios.
Throughout the years, we have asked for no rent increases. Landlords have said that these rent increases are necessary for repairs and maintenance in their buildings.
Alguna vez ustedes, los del panel, han ido a las casas de uno de millones de apartamentos donde ni siquiera hay agua caliente o calefacción. Mis vecinos de los edificios de al lado estuvieron un mes sin calefacción.
Have any of you members of the panel gone to one of the thousands, millions of apartments where there are, there is no heat or hot water? My neighbors in the building next door went a month without heat.
En el Bronx, colapsó una parte de un edificio. En Sunset Park, una fachada cayó y mató una persona. Han visto en Manhattan que un edificio completo está dañado y no lo están componiendo.
In the Bronx part of a building collapsed, and in Sunset Park, a facade fell and killed someone. Have you seen a building in Manhattan that is completely damaged and has not been fixed?
¿Cómo pretenden aumentar la renta cuando ni siquiera hacen las reparaciones? Nos han mentido y nos siguen mintiendo con que tienen muchos gastos. No, señores, no estoy de acuerdo con ningún aumento a los apartamentos.
How can you plan to increase rent when there aren't even repairs being done? We have been lied to and continue being lied to about these large expenses. No, I do not agree with any rent increase to our apartments.
Ustedes, los del RGB, que abogan por los otros inquilinos, apóyenos más. Les pedimos que nos escuchen. ¿Nos permitan? No permitan que nos aumenten. Defiéndanos. Queremos un cien, un cero por ciento.
Those from the RGB who advocate for tenants, support us more. We ask that you listen to us. Do not allow an increase. Defend us. What do we want? Zero percent.
¿Qué queremos? Cuando lo queremos.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Geraldine Sosa. Geraldine Sosa. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Geraldine Sosa, and I'm thirteen years old, and I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York, and I'm a member of Brooklyn Tenants United Group. I am here. I am here to talk about why I don't want rent money to go up. One reason I don't want it to go up is because I won't have enough time to spend with my mom, and I'll barely see her. And every time, I always want to spend time with her because she helps me with stuff. She won't end up, like, every time if she comes back from work, she won't end up talking or helping me with homework and other reasons. She'll be exhausted and end up sleeping. Another reason is that my parents won't afford food or clothes due to rent money going up. Food is expensive now due to inflation. My parents' priority will now be about making a lot of money to afford rent. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Christina Robles. Thank you. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cristiana Robles. Soy miembro de Inquilino Unidos de Sunset Park.
Good afternoon. I'm Cristiana Robles, and I'm a member of the Brooklyn Tenants United from Sunset Park.
Tengo veinte años en Sunset Park.
I have lived in Sunset Park for twenty years.
Nunca en mi vida había visto este aumento de la renta.
Never in my life have I seen this type of increase in rent.
Soy la única que trabaja en la casa.
I am the only person that works in my household.
Y me quita sueño.
And it, you know, I don't sleep enough because of it.
Desde que dijeron van a aumentar, yo jamás he vuelto a dormir.
Since they said that they were going to increase the rent, I have not slept well since.
A las dos de la mañana estoy despierta.
I'm waking up at two o'clock in the morning.
Sí, y no duermo jamás.
And then I don't go back to sleep.
No me quiero ir de Sunset Park porque tengo los médicos ahí mismo.
I don't want to leave Sunset Park because my doctors are right there.
Tengo la iglesia.
My church is there.
Tengo mis vecinos donde voy a la reunión donde la concejal.
I have my neighbors where I go to the meeting at the council members' place.
Donde Marcela y Alexa Avilés.
Where's, it's at Marcela and Alexa Avilés.
Que son mi bastón.
That they're my, like, bastion.
Yo no quiero que suban la renta porque no más.
I don't want the rent to increase because, no.
Yo al aumento de la renta le doy cero por ciento.
For me, the rent increase, zero percent.
Porque y al, al, a la calle que recuerden que él vivió en Sunset Park, él vivió en Brooklyn.
And the mayor needs to remember that he lived in Sunset, well, he lived in Brooklyn.
Y también fue pobre como somos nosotros.
And he was also poor like how we are.
Entonces, que reme, que rememben que nosotros fuimos los que los subimos.
And he needs. And he needs to remember that we're the ones that brought him up.
Para terminar le digo que Inquilino Unidos nunca seremos vencidos.
And to end it, I just want to say that the Tenants United will never be defeated.
Muchas gracias. Thank you so much.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Our, our next three speakers will be Lincoln, Honorable Lincoln Wrestler from the New York City Council, Ian Huntley, and Krem Ramadani.
Good evening. My name is Lincoln Wrestler, and I am a council member representing downtown Brooklyn and North Brooklyn. I want to thank the Members of the Rent Guidelines Board for being here tonight, and I want to thank this extraordinary coalition of tenants for showing up like you always do. One out of three tenants in New York City pays a majority of their income in rent. Think about that. Every third New Yorker is struggling to get by. We are facing an affordability crisis of unprecedented proportions. People are struggling. And unfortunately, Mayor Adams and the Rent Guidelines Board that he has appointed has operated not like a Democrat, but like his Republican predecessors. We have gone back to the Giuliani and the Bloomberg years and seen rent increases that are quite simply unsustainable for working-class New Yorkers. After increasing rents by three point two five percent in 2022, three percent in 2023, we have already seen, and five percent on two-year leases from 2022. People are struggling. People have already experienced significant rent increases, and what we need right now is for the Rent Guidelines Board and Mayor Adams to start course correcting. We cannot afford to see more New Yorkers unable to make, to pay their rent, forced into our shelter system because of the increases of this board. Our rent-regulated housing stock has been the bulwark that has kept our city, has given, has ensured that a million New Yorkers are able to access what should be affordable housing. But with every wrong decision of the Rent Guidelines Board, we lose that affordable housing stock. Unit by unit, working-class families, folks on a fixed income, cannot get by. And so what we're asking of you today is to freeze the rent. No more rent increases. This is what is required to preserve the affordability that is a distant dream for so many New Yorkers. This is what is required to keep our rent-regulated housing stock affordable to the people who are with us here tonight. We need your leadership. We need your courage, because that is what the tenants of New York City demand and deserve and require. We are going to keep fighting until we get the justice that we deserve from the Rent Guidelines Board and Mayor Adams. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a page out of Michael's book because I was so perfect, because y'all are the people in the room that really matter, because we know that this is just a sham here. So, I'm glad to be standing with you this evening. My name is Ian Terrell Huntley. I'm a third-generation Brooklynite. I am a tenant, a renter, and I am running in Assembly District 56, Besti, in Crown Heights, as a tenant, as a renter, as a person who understands and living in a rent-stabilized apartment, someone who understands like you what you're, what, what we're facing here. Unlike the people, I mean, we've got some good people here, the tenants who are with us, who understand what we're facing, but we've got these others who represent the establishment, the people that have failed us and not delivered for us. I'm also proud to say I'm a member of NYCC, a tenant, people who are, I'm a member of tenant movements and organizations long before I've stepped up as a candidate to be it and also to speak before you this evening. I'm a part of a history of people fighting like y'all, what y'all doing right now, why we're here, because we understand what we're facing. I know what it means to be making a choice between paying for daycare and paying for rent. I know what it means to be worrying about going to the doctor and making a choice and having to not go to the doctor because I have to pay rent. And this is in a rent-stabilized apartment that I've lived in for twelve years now, and I can't even imagine what I'm facing, and this is a tax abatement. So this only exists because we decided to give a developer some money so he can do this out of the kindness of his heart. This is all nonsense that we need to be fighting and doing more to change, and this is why we need to be fighting for rent freeze, rollback of rents, but also universal rent control and rent stability and more affordable housing, true affordable housing, not what these developers, these millionaire and billionaire developers are putting in our communities without regard for what it is. I've lived in Besti since 2009. I've seen my people be priced and pushed out, people just like me who've decided, you know, who want to set up roots or have had roots there, who cannot stay there because their community's been sold off by politicians who represent an establishment and represent the real estate interests instead of the people of the community. And we have an opportunity in Assembly District, Assembly District 56, with this primary on the fifteenth and early voting on June 25th, to vote for someone who actually understands what you're going through and is dealing with it, and will fight all the way in Albany and is fighting with you right now.
Thank you so much. While we're waiting, while we're waiting for our next speaker, our next, our next three, thank you. Our next three speakers. Thank you. Will be the Honorable Shahana Hanif, a New York City Council member, Patricia Outlaw, and Fabian Bravo.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Councilmember Shahana Hanif. Power to all the tenants. I'm grateful to be with you all. I know that folks from the Fifth Avenue Committee are here. I see you all, 63 Tiffany Place. Thank you for showing up, but it is unfortunate that you have to show up. It is untenable what is happening to rent stabilization in our city. We should be talking about how we protect rent stabilization. We should not keep coming back to hear about how much more you all should give to live in New York City. That should not be the conversation. I was here last year, and you know, we all caused a ruckus last year. And the year before. And nothing has changed over the last couple of years. Right. One pathway is for fire him. And the other is to support legislators that are with you all, and I'm so grateful that my colleague Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler was here, Councilmember Crystal Hudson was here, and Ian Huntley, who I'm supporting, is also here. And we need the voice of residents. We need the voice of renters presented in our, our legislature. Now, I'm here to just affirm that my commitment and my fight remains for a rent rollback. That is what I'm here for. So that you all know, and of course, I'm going to submit my testimony online, but I wanted to show my face to the renters here because I know what's going on, and council members across New York City are seeing what is happening to families. The thirteen-year-old who just spoke should not be spending her time, should not be spending her time testifying at an RGB hearing. That is outrageous. There was, there's a woman here in a wheelchair who has come all the way to testify, and she's waiting, and there are so many folks who could not make it. So I want you to know that when your legislator shows up, they are here for those who could not make it out, because it shouldn't be on you to keep fighting to survive in this city. And so we're with you. Tenant power has always been foundational to the mosaic and the fabric of New York City. Renters keep the city going, and we will, we will win a rent rollback. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Patricia, Patricia Outlaw? Patricia, Patricia Outlaw? Miss Outlaw? Is that the woman in the wheelchair with the microphone? Or is it one of them? Did you have a microphone?
Can you get just a little closer? Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Ma'am, do you want to wait just a moment? Thank you. Please, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Charlene Davis. I live in Coney Island. I'm here to represent those who are disabled, who cannot get out to speak at these things. It was very... It was very difficult for me, but I made the decision to get involved in my community. I joined the Community Board, which is Community Board 13. I am not speaking for Community Board 13. I am speaking for myself as a resident, as a tenant, as a disabled person, as a person who lives on a fixed income. Every month, it's very hard for me to pay my bills. I have to decide which bill I'm going to pay. I pay my rent regularly on a regular basis because, as my grandmother always said to me, "You've got to have a window to throw your mess out of." If you ain't got a window to throw your mess out, then you up creek without a paddle. I would ask that this board would consider holding landlords responsible, more responsible, for not making timely repairs, decent repairs, not patching up stuff, but doing exactly what it takes to make it stay stable. They need to hold them accountable. They need to give tenants an abatement for having to live with the conditions that they have. It's not right. You're still getting the same amount of money, even when agencies come and they help you to pay your rent. Public assistance helps to pay the rent. Catholic charities help to pay the rent. The Jewish communities and stuff, they help you to pay your rent as well. But once that rent is paid, you still have the same issues and the same problems. Hold these landlords responsible. Get in their pockets. When you start getting in their pockets and making them open up their books to show where all this money is going to, I bet you things will change. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you. Is, thank you. Is Patricia, is Patricia Outlaw here? Patricia Outlaw? We'll try that. Fabian Bravo, please. Thank you. I'm sorry? Are you, are you signed up now? We have a number of folks, but if you want to sign up, we're happy to, we'll be happy to hear you, of course. Are you speaking on her behalf? That's fine. That's fine, ma'am. Please.
Okay, my name is Melinda Outlaw. I've lived in this neighborhood and raised my children. How many years? 82, was that? 42 years? Forty-two years. Now I'm retired, fixed income, and the rent is going up. And not only that, well, luckily I don't pay electricity, but they've increased the AC cost because now they charge everybody for AC. As I went around, I got the information last minute. I went around to the seven buildings in my neighborhood, the right-hand street of the field. Just before we started, it was a flood in one of the buildings. Two weeks, about a week ago, there's three buildings attached to each other along the side of Montgomery. All our walls were shut off because of repairs. I mean, repairs are being done, but they patch up work. And now they want to increase, and they're not really fixing the work. You know, I don't know. I'm hoping a lot of things are here because I went around my buildings and put up so people can come up. Okay, I went around my building to put up signs that say, "Come on over, speak out for what we have to speak out for, or at least show up." To let them know that we're here. The landlord's increasing his rent, but what are we getting from it? You know, it's patched up, like patched up. And then now, like I said, I'm on a fixed income, and it's going up, and what are we getting for it though? You know, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bravo.
Mi nombre es Fabian, y trabajo con vecinos, ayudando vecinos, y vivo en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York.
My name is Fabian, and I work with neighbors, helping neighbors, and I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York.
La Junta de Dirigentes debe tomar una decisión justa y equitativa. Esa es la esencia de la cual se fundó la Junta de Dirigentes.
The RGB needs to make a just and equitable decision. This is the essence in which the RGB was formed.
La voz de la comunidad hace un eco desde los apartamentos hasta las oficinas. Y dicen así: "La renta está muy alta."
The voices of the community form an echo from the apartments to offices, and it says, "The rent is too high."
También dicen: "La Junta de Dirigentes nos está fallando."
They also say the Rent Guidelines Board is failing us.
Evidentemente nos está fallando.
Evidently, you are failing us.
A pesar de todas las evidencias que presentamos, el aumento está a favor de los caseros.
Sigue señor.
Constantemente ayuda a inquilinos que están siendo acosados por los caseros.
Sigue, sigue.
Quienes a su vez amenazan a los inquilinos que van a llamar a inmigración, los amenazan con mensajes de texto, los intimidan con llamadas en la noche.
Evidently, you are failing us. And despite all of the evidence that we present, the increase is favoring landlords. I constantly help tenants who are being harassed by their landlords, who threaten tenants with calling immigration. They also threaten them with text messages and intimidate them with calls during the night.
Además, los caseros aceptan el pago de la renta en efectivo. ¿Y saben por qué aceptan el pago de la renta en efectivo?
Sigue, sigue.
Por no pagar los impuestos. Además, porque es una táctica que usan para llevar a los inquilinos a la corte de vivienda por no pago.
The landlords accept rent only in cash. And you know why the landlords accept rent only in cash? It's to not pay their taxes because it's a tactic that they use to take tenants to court.
Los caseros son astutos y desviados y sin compasión.
Sigue señor.
Sin embargo, tenemos fe que en esta ocasión ustedes no van a aumentar el inquilio.
Landlords are sly and depraved and have no compassion. However, we have faith that in this occasion, you all will not increase the rent.
Sabemos que en su corazón está la semilla de la compasión y la bondad.
We know that in your heart, there is a seed of compassion and goodness.
Sí existe en ustedes la compasión. Debe de existir, se le ve en sus ojos. Les pedimos que no hagan este aumento.
Compassion should exist within you. We can see it in your eyes, and you should not increase the rent.
¿Qué queremos? Cero por ciento. ¿Cuándo? Ahora.
What do we want? Zero percent. When do we want it? Now.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Clara Perez Joseph, Lorraine Taylor, and William Bershatsky.
Good evening, my neighbors, elected officials, and members of the board. My name is Clara Perez Joseph. I've been involved with Brooklyn Tenants United. And when they were called Inquilinos Unidos, I was a tenant leader for seven years. I'm a member of Tenants PAC. I've lived in Crown Heights for 58 years and pushing 80 years. I'm here to let the RGB board know that the ethical decision is at best to roll back the rent and at least to freeze the rent. Tenant, and I say ethical because, not because we, we're not asking for it because we feel like it, but because it really is intrinsically ethical. Tenants, tenants cannot afford these rent increases. Their salaries are going up. Inflation is chewing at the meager income of many working families. In 2019, the New York State Senate and Assembly passed a series of laws to protect tenants except MCI and Good Cause, which we're still waiting for. Although they were significant, in retaliation, the landlords are trying to rip this progress apart with the help of the RGB board. The landlords are destroying the stability, as you have heard, of families and neighborhoods and making worse the homeless situation in New York City. To our elected officials in the House, some of you have been supportive of tenants. And to those that you have stalled to pass laws to protect the tenants, you are contributing to urban blight. Then who will vote for you? Vote and pass those bills into law to protect us on the day that they are heard the way we go out and vote for you to put you in office. Housing is a human right, and raising rents at this time is anti-humanitarian. Please, do not sit, do not sit, members of the board. Do not sit on this board and think you are peacocks with prestige for the power that you have been handed over. That is a privilege. Exercise your power for good. Do the right thing. No more rent hikes. Housing is a human right. No more rent hikes. Housing is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine Taylor?
Good evening. I just learned that our increase was 3%. They raised mine to 4%. That shows you how crooked my landlord is. I'll be asked for account ledger tomorrow. Okay. I just want to let you know, you want to raise our rent again, for what? We still haven't addressed the last current issues. Management don't even take our phone calls. Voicemail is always full, okay? But we pay our monthly rent. Lack of communication. We haven't had a lock on our front door for security, an intercar, for over three years. Up the block, Bedford Avenue. I didn't come far. No security. You provide refurbished refrigerators and ovens, which I was told was electric, but we pay a gas bill, okay? We don't even have garbage cans, garbage cans, for 96 tenants. We got brownstone cans. Come up the block, the rats will run all across your feet. We have to choose when we dump our garbage, day or night, day to day. Okay? But you want to raise our rent, for what? We have super, one super, for six buildings, six buildings. And where's our repairs? Every year, we go through research, research, research up our ass. They always looking for another document. For what? And another thing, all these people spoke about their paychecks. They're doing illegal stuff. Since when your hard work and overtime is included into your rent, okay? That's a whole separate issue. Look for the crooks amongst your system, and you will get money in your pockets. Is it not, is it not illegal to be counting people overtime? Isn't that extra money in their pocket? We don't even get that anymore, okay? You're not enforcing the guidelines.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you was doing your job, one-year leases would be two-year leases by now. So we wouldn't have to go through research, research up our ass, okay? Did you run a so-called pilot program? That's the big word, pilot program. No, you didn't because you didn't know the truth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wait, I got two more things, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Bring the laws into 20th century, 20th century, okay? Because you need to sign the laws, revise them, add them, add changes. You know the word, change? Both sides can agree, come to the table. Make your dollars desperately seeking, you desperately seeking through dollars from your tenants, not the landlords. Tell them to take down that scaffolding that they paid for for six years, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Look for their penalties and find money. They owe thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in penalty. Get the money from them.
Thank you.
Your position and your job is supposed to be for both sides. Let us come together and meet in the middle. Good night.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Our next three speakers after Mr. Bershatsky will be Johnny Rivera, Lenith McCullough, and Gordon Lee. Please, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is William, and I'm here advocating for 3 million poor New Yorkers that can't afford to pay rent at all. All of these people are facing eviction in housing court. I am one of them. I'm going to be in Brooklyn Eviction Court tomorrow on the fifth floor, and I'm inviting everybody in this auditorium to come for court support. So come down tomorrow at 9:30 to the fifth floor in Brooklyn Housing Court. All of these people are in the process of being evicted and facing homelessness. All of them can't sleep at night thinking when the marshal is going to come knocking on the door. They're going to wind up homeless, 3 million people. You can raise the rents for the rich. Let the rich pay 4%, 5%, 6%. Tax them. Leave the poor people alone and give them a rent rollback every year. And the rich raise it 6%. They, they can tolerate that, but the poor can't. They're winding up homeless in the streets. So, just, my thought is just not raise the rent, roll it back for the poor, and tax the rich. And come down to housing court tomorrow at 9:30, fifth floor. I'll be there with probably 30 other people, but I want to put 300 people in there so the judge can see what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera? Johnny Rivera is next. Thank you. Is that your name?
My name is Mr. Gordon Lee.
Okay, you're coming up in two more speakers.
All right.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rivera? Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Hi, good evening. I don't know what to say when I come up here. The nice landlord-manager that's sat right there by the name of Chris Uffin Neal-Sue Bayridge, you know, he gave such a sobbing story about his family, 40 years managing buildings, how hard it is. Do you know how much a building costs? Easily $2 to $4 million apiece. These are very rich millionaires who are crying poverty. But look who's in the audience, working-class people. Working-class people who unfortunately have to come here and cry over, not the equivalent of millions, but pennies. But those pennies for us is everything for us. And we have to cry. To whom? To guys and women who've been, who've already agreed that you are going to support the landlords. And I know you have a nice, strong, sturdy face, but we know where you're coming from. We know where your butter, your bread is buttered, and it's not here with the working poor. But who cleans your offices? Who cleans your homes? Who takes care of your babies? Who walks your dog, huh? It's not you. These are the people, and you're creating a city where... These are the people, and you're creating a city where only the well-to-do, but not the rest of us can be here to be part of it. And this is orchestrated by design, and so I don't know what I'm doing here, and what are we doing here? We know that nothing is changing here. These millionaire owners and landlords, they come here, literally didn't cry, and they, he sounded so sensible. If I didn't know what he was or what he was doing, I would have believed him. That's how good and effective the campaign is. I'm a tenant organizer of Brooklyn Legal Service Corporation. I've been part of 30 tenant associations. They cry, you know why? Because they can't get repairs, unlike you. You make a phone call, it happens, not with them.
Thank you.
Zero increase.
Thank you so much. Lenith McCullough? Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening. I am totally disgusted at what I'm hearing here today. How do you all sleep at night? That's what I want to know. Do you know what I have in my kitchen at night? I keep on the light, so those freaking rats don't run over my foot like they run over my foot. You talk about repairs, they come in, they patch up, that's all they do. And then they leave halfway through the job, and you don't, you don't freaking hear from They half-patch a tenant upstairs, so all the water, when he accidentally leave, not his fault, it comes out in my apartment and floods it. I've been living there 40 fucking years, I'm tired. I am exhausted of this bullshit that's going on. It's making me sick. Do you understand that? It's making my children sick. You don't even know what they're using for repairs. God only knows. I am tired. You need to do something, not tomorrow, now. This is atrocious. It must stop.
Stop stealing people overtime. It's what the law, look at the rent guidelines. Stop taking these hard people's working money.
I don't know what else to say. I'm just ashamed of you all. What do you tell your children? Huh? What are you telling them?
Nothing about us.
Every day outside, I see a home, old wom, old women on the streets. They have no place to live. I have to ask them, did you eat today, my sister? Can I get you something to eat? There's nobody helping the people who need help. Something must be done.
At least give us a garbage can.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. After Mr. Lee, we will hear from Winsome Pendergrass, Claudia P., and Melanie Lewis. Please, go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Yes. Good night. I am Mr. Gordon Lee, but you can call me God. I'm a member of all groups because I want to fight for all important causes, including housing and healthcare and food security. And I protested President Nixon on my birthday of June 23rd of 1973, and I was born when Watergate happened. I also protested Cheryl Ford. Now, I know that you Board members and landlords and Mayor Adams don't care anything about what we say, and they want to raise rent, but you still have to give us a rent freeze and rent rollback for another reason, to honor our troops, veterans, first responders, and men in uniform made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Memorial Day is coming, it's the time of year that we're supposed to be honoring our men in uniform. September 11th is going to be in three months. And they fought for, gave their life for our freedoms, including right to shelter, housing being a human right, right to affordable housing, and right to counsel on housing. That's one of the things that they gave their life for. So for that, if you can't think of us, you still have to think of our men in uniform, because that's what they gave their life for, for all of us and them, to have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And something else. Now, you know, one of the bad, one of the dangers we face about gentrification, rising rents, and being forced out of New York City or New York State, is that they've been reports that outside of, for one, outside of New York City or outside of New York State, they have reported sightings of wild animals, dangers of wild animal encounters. That's where tenants are going to be forced to live, like you said, many-
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's where, because like they said, many people, more people leaving New York City or New York State, and they're forced to live where tragic wild animal encounters show up, where abortion rights are restricted or banned, voting rights too, and there's crime and drugs run by Trump-supporting white supremacist criminals. They harass and assault voters.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee? Thank you.
While they were in a line home.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Winsome Pendergrass. Thank you so much.
Members of the RGB, good evening. My name is Winsome Pendergrass. I am a member of New York Communities for Change. Ladies and gentlemen of the RGB, the rent is too damn high. I was priced out of the community of the New Kirk area 80 years ago. I now live in Brownsville, 497 Chester Street, for the past seven and a half years. I am a senior citizen with limited income. My rent-stabilizer partner is important to me and all the other people of color living in this city. I can breathe and have the assurance that my limited income won't be swallowed up by high rent costs. It's important because it keeps me in the neighborhood that I have grown to love and respect other people. Since 2019, rent laws, real estate lobbies spend, listen to this, 13.56 million dollars to lobby in Albany. Let me repeat that. Since 2019, the real estate lobbies have spent 13.56 million dollars to lobby in Albany for affordable apartments, to get rid of all the laws that keep us there. They had money to spend on lobbying, but not on repairs. The rats, the roaches, the mold, the falling ceilings are still there for us to deal with, while they slip money under the counter to give to politicians. And somebody has bought, or a few politicians has bought new summer houses somewhere, or their children going to private school, because they use us as a cash cow. Their net income, NOI, are up 10.4% over the previous years. This is, is, this increase is historic, the fourth-highest jump in the past 32 years.
Thank you, ma'am.
And they want more. Yes, sir, I hear you say thanks. I want to say to you, rent freeze is an important thing in our vocabulary. Rent rollback is important. Do not increase 0%, 0%. I am calling on your humanity, your heart, your decency. Think of the seniors. 130,000 children leaves out of a shelter in this city every morning to go to school. That's a shame on the richest city in the world. Think of the history you are living in this city. You will be out of that seat one day. Each of you, as a rent-guarnet board member, has the fate of working New Yorkers in your hand and on your conscience.
Claudia P.?
Are we boring you? My name is Claudia Powell. I'm a born, bred, and lifelong Brooklynite, and I'm part of the Lenox Tenant Association in Park Slope. A lot of people think Park Slope is populated by wealthy owners and renters, but there are plenty of working-class people who've lived in this neighborhood their whole lives, and I'm proud to be part of that population. I'm here today to urge the Rent Guidelines Board to vote not to increase rent on rent-stabilized tenants. On behalf of the tenants in my building, the Lenox Tenant Association, our landlords do absolutely nothing to maintain the condition of their building despite continued complaints to them and to 311. Whatever benefits they would reap from a rent increase will not go towards the upkeep of their building or improving our living conditions. And, yeah, and garbage cans, you got that right, sister. An increase won't even maintain our living conditions, as our landlords are letting the building fall into disrepair and refuse to perform even basic maintenance, like roof and plumbing repairs, or pest control, like rats and roaches and god knows what else is hanging around that building. A rent increase would hurt me personally, because I'm still recovering financially from losing my job in 2020 from the pandemic, the first year of the pandemic, as are many of my fellow tenants. Many of them are in the service area, working for the Department of Ed, the Administration for Children's Services, and other nonprofit agencies. They serve this city, and like me and fellow New Yorkers throughout the other boroughs, they should be able to afford it. We know that some members of this Board, and you all know who you are, have vested interests in real estate and which are in direct conflict with my fellow New Yorkers, who struggle to pay our rent and the necessities of life. If Mayor Adams actually cares about helping New Yorkers, then he should listen to his own words. He said, and I quote, "It is clear that the housing crisis in this big knot that's sitting at the center of many of the problems that this city is facing, one of the issues that remained constant was housing, housing, housing. If I could borrow from one of the great philosophers of our time, the rent is just too damn high, and people are struggling, and it's not only low income. Oftentimes, when we talk about housing, we talk about low income, but speak to that accountant and that cook, or if you work in a fast-food restaurant and you and your spouse are both being paid minimum wage, then they're just hurdles to get over," unquote. So if the mayor and the Rent Guidelines Board really want to help New Yorkers, then I demand a rent freeze and no increase on rent-stabilized buildings. And how you can all go home to your fancy-ass apartments and vote to increase our rent is just beyond me. It's beyond me.
After our next speaker, Melanie Lewis, we will hear from Olga Ortega, Nidia Rodriguez, and Brian Pagoda at about 7:15 or thereabouts. We're going to take a brief break, and we'll come back. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Hi, this is Olga Ortega, and I am going to sight-translate what she wrote. Hello, my name is Olga Ortega. I'm a member of the Neighbors Helping Neighbors organization. I am a resident of 223 23rd Street, and I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn. Today, I want to explain why I'm against the rent increase for this year. First of all, I have many problems with my housing space and the apartment. For years, the previous landlords have not made any repairs, and they have not been responsible for the maintenance in the building. And the landlord does not pay the fines that the city has imposed on him. Besides that, they have not given us lease agreements in a while. As a matter of fact, we even took our landlord to court, but he never, he or she, never appeared, and he, he or she doesn't even pay the fines. In the winters, we have no heat or hot water for many months. The owner did not show up in court for over a year because he doesn't care. We have no electricity in like the public areas, and besides that, we only have like one income. Our neighbors do not have hot water or have not had hot water for 12 days. My husband is the only one that works, and just like me, there are many families that are undergoing these conditions. For these reasons, I ask you to think about us, the community of families that work very hard and do not want to be displaced from their homes. Thank you and good night. Housing is a human right.
Nidia Rodriguez?
Rodriguez?
Rodriguez.
Usted? Es usted? Okay.
Buenas noches.
Good evening. Oh, sorry, good evening. Señora, hagamos favor. Use ese micrófono ahí, y yo puedo utilizar este. Pero acercase al micrófono, okay?
Muchas gracias.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Lidia Rodriguez.
My name is Nidia Rodriguez.
Yo pertenezco a vecino, ayudando vecino.
I belong to Neighbors Helping Neighbors.
Yo le vengo-
I'm here to tell you, or to ask you to take into account before you make a decision to raise the rent.
En los niños que piense. No piensen tanto con la cabeza, piensen un poquito con el corazón.
Think about the children. Don't think so much with your heads, but think more with your hearts.
Porque para un padre pagar pa, poder pagar esa renta, si la suben, va a tener que elegir entre comprar comida o pagar la renta.
Because a parent, if you increase the rent, will have to make a decision to either pay rent or pay for food.
Y entonces, Nueva York, como dicen, estarán llenas de desamparados. Si ahora no hay gente en la calle que no puede pagar la renta, ¿qué será si la suben?
So, in, New York will become an area, a space full of homeless people. So if New York has a situation with homeless now, what do you think is going to happen if the rent goes up?
Porque, porque un padre, tiene que ser, un padre de familia tiene que tener cuatro trabajos pa pagar esa renta, si la suben.
A parent has to have like four jobs to pay the rent if the rent goes up.
Por favor, piensen un poquito. No tanto esto, sino aquí.
Thank you. Please think, please think a little bit, not-
How much, how can I pay?
Please think a-
Excuse me, sir. Please, please allow the speaker to finish. Thank you.
Please, please think a little bit more, not so much with your heads, but more with your hearts. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Brian Pagoda? Brian Pagoda? Brian Pagoda? Okay, we'll take a quick break. We're going to take a very brief recess. We will be right back, and we'll continue with the testimony. Our first three speakers after our break will be Cynthia Nambs, Kevin Fife, and Adam Grabart. We'll be right back. Thank you.
Vamos a tomar un descanso breve.
10 minutes. Ten minutes. In registration, please make sure if you want to speak, you sign in. It closes at eight. Thank you, Liz.
Ten minutes.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
This is this last? Uh, we already had one each. We had one on the day of the Bronx, the day of Brooklyn, and then two days coming up to the end of the season. And then we have the final vote, which is also... I think so. I believe it's... No, no. It's... Yeah. Our final vote on the guidelines will take place Monday, June 17th, starting on 7 p.m. at Assembly Hall at Hunter College, in Easton National, in Park and Lyman Street. The doors open at six, and returns are very early. And, um... News? We had a few... I think she was here at the beginning. Yeah. Yeah, she was here. Because the meeting technically starts at five, and then we started about 5:15, and she, I think, was one of the first people to speak. She's, like, short, like, short, yeah. Yeah, she was here for a while, and then she left. Yeah. Uh, honestly, I'm just... I don't know, just to interpret, yeah. No, 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 I'm just interpreting what's being said in first fashion to English.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I think, obviously, say French is difficult. I should be way too...
All right. Welcome back. We're going to get started.
Bienvenidos, damas y caballeros. Ya vamos a empezar?
Cynthia Nambs? Is Cynthia here? Kevin Fife? Oh, sorry, is that... Oh, go ahead, please. I don't, I don't think so, so please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kevin Fife. I'm here with members of my synagogue, Congregation Bates and Chautauqua. One of Judaism's core concepts is Tikun Olam, or repairing the world. Our tradition teaches that no individual is solely responsible for making the world a better place, but neither are they free to absolve themselves of doing something. In other words, everyone can do something, but no one has to do everything. So why am I here? Because I live in a rent-stabilized apartment, and I want to do something about the cost of housing in this city, and urge you to do the same. Your staff publishes numerous reports on the state of the local housing market, which include a lot of data, a lot of data. But if you distill all that information, you are left with a couple of key points from the most recent data available. Landlord net operating income, as you've heard, right, went up more than 10% on average. But the wages of people who work in the city decreased in both nominal and real terms. This is simply not a sustainable situation, and it will only get worse as rents continue to rise. In addition, the Federal Reserve has stated that rent increases continue to be a major contributor to ongoing inflation nationwide. The city is undoubtedly mired in a housing affordability crisis, and the board cannot fix that alone. But you do have the power to do something. You can keep over a million apartments affordable, and you can help to slow a key driver of inflation. You can and should approve a rent rollback for the 24-25 lease term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me just ask again if Melanie Lewis is here or Cynthia Nambs? Okay. Adam Graubart? And Adam, just so I can let the next three folks know. Amy Clark, Maria Cortez, and Flor Moran. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Graubart, and I serve as a Cooperburg Ritz-Master rabbinical intern at Congregation Bates and Chautauqua. I'm testifying today because Jewish tradition charges me to protect poor, working-class, and middle-class New Yorkers in the midst of a housing crisis. A rent rollback is an essential tool to keep our housing stock affordable. On the holiday of Sukkot, many Jews dwell in temporary shelters and enjoy the fall harvest. However, Moses Maimonides said that whoever feasts without feeding the poor has failed to fulfill the obligations of the festival. In a time of relative abundance, we must use power and privilege to think of those with fewer resources. We live in the wealthiest city in the world, yet we fail to house everyone around us. Landlords saw a 10.4% increase in net operating income, yet they are hiking rents on New Yorkers. You are hiking rents on New Yorkers, already struggling to afford rent. Another rent hike, resulting in an aggregated 8% to 10% jump in the last three years, puts many New Yorkers on the brink of rent burden, eviction, and displacement. In our city of relative abundance, you need to implement a rent rollback for these New Yorkers. Moreover, stable housing has helped American Jews and others gain a foothold in this city for decades. Due to stable, affordable rents, my grandparents, the children of immigrants, made lifelong friends in New York, attended public schools, and began careers here. Rent stability was essential in their time, and it is essential in ours. I plead you to use your power to maintain our moral integrity and historical legacy. Thousands of immigrant, working-class, and middle-class New Yorkers require rent-stabilized apartments to live and thrive in our city. During this affordability and eviction crisis, we need a rent rollback now.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy Clark? Is Amy here? Amy Clark? Um, Maria Cortez? Okay. Flor Moran? Thank you. Muchas gracias.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Flor Moran. Vivo en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, Nueva York. Soy miembro de Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn.
Good evening. My name is Flor Moran. I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, and I'm a member of Brooklyn Tenants United.
Muchas gracias a la junta de directrices y a la gente de la audiencia por escucharme. Espero que nos ayuden y sea todo positivo.
Thank you to the Rent Guidelines Board and the public for listening to me. I hope that you can help us and that everything turns out positive.
Estoy aquí para hablarles del aumento del alquiler que estamos viviendo en estos momentos difíciles, con tantos gastos, y que personalmente no me alcanza con el sueldo que gano. Ojalá y ustedes tengan algo de consideración.
I'm here to speak about the rent increases that we're experiencing in these difficult times with so many costs, and that I personally cannot afford it with the income I earn. Hopefully, you all have some consideration.
Los inquilinos estamos pasando por momentos muy malos. Los apartamentos en pésimas condiciones. Los caseros dicen que no arreglan para que de esa forma nos vayamos. Así me lo han dicho, y son muy racistas.
Tenants are going through very bad times. Apartments are in horrible conditions, and the landlords say they will not make repairs so that we can leave our apartments. I have been told this, and they're racist.
Esta situación del aumento me ha afectado porque voy a trabajar más tiempo y debo de ir a buscar ayuda. Esto es todo el tiempo. Además, el edificio está sucio, hay ratones, cucarachas, y afectan la salud de mi familia.
The rent increase will affect me because I will have to work more, and I will have to look for assistance, and this will occur all the time. Additionally, the building is dirty, and there are rats, roaches, and this affects my family's health.
Estoy aquí para apoyar a otras personas que lo necesitan, y gracias a la organización Vecinos Ayudando Vecinos por luchar por nuestros derechos.
I am here to support everyone who needs it, and thank you to the organization Neighbors Helping Neighbors for fighting for our rights.
Que pedimos? Cero por ciento, cero por ciento al aumento de la renta.
What do we want? Zero percent, zero percent increase.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Thank you. Flor Moran, and then our next three speakers will be Shasta Spicer, Shasta Spicer, Amy Coalelo, and AM Goodridge.
That was Flor Moran.
Oh, that was Flor. Okay. Thank you, sorry. Shasta Spicer? Okay. Amy Coalelo? Amy Coalelo?
Good afternoon to our tenant representatives only. My name is Amy Colato, and I'm a tenant organizer with the Bushwick Housing Independence Project, or BHIP. I'm here today to talk on behalf of all of the Bushwick tenants who couldn't be here. Some who couldn't come but plan on submitting their written comments, but many, many who still after 50 years don't even know this process exists and is for them. For a board that is meant to hear from as many sides as possible, we have hardly to see any announcements, public educations, anything encouraging as many New Yorkers as possible to come here today or getting them to commit to submitting their comments. This city pumps so much money into ads to get people to buy and to do everything except for fight for their homes, or to make it easier for them to access real resources. Being the butt of the jokes about Bushwick just being, you know, hipsters and bars and artsy stuff, you know, painted as a lost neighborhood similarly to Williamsburg, I'm sure you know that there are still working-class families and low-income families living there. It's a shame that this board doesn't prioritize outreach to them. This year, most people that we've met with have no idea if their rent's stabilized because their landlords make their own rules, deciding what their rent will be regardless as to the modest increases that you all decide, except for our tenant reps, and even deciding whether or not an apartment is rent-stabilized anymore, not going through the proper channels with DHCR. During my short time organizing, I do want to share a story about a specific tenant that I still think about every day. During my short time organizing in Bushwick, this is the worst conditions that I've ever seen. I mainly worked in Queens, now working in Bushwick. I've never seen conditions like this. I once met with a woman who lives off of a Wykoff Building. She was six months pregnant, and she had a two-year-old son. They were living in such a way, I had to fight back tears as she attempted to show me around. I think about her every day. It was a railroad apartment that was chopped in half. It was so tiny, no ventilation, and the tiny bathroom's only vent, there was only one window in the entire apartment, had so much mold, it was growing out and taking over her ceiling. The building was in such terrible shape, and it seemed that almost all of the apartments were chopped into two. So the landlords figured out how to double, triple their rewards. So I asked the board.
Thank you.
Do you think that this is worth giving more money to landlords? We're asking for a rent rollback and to stop lining landlords' pockets. Please consider New Yorkers, everyday New Yorkers, not just the BS landlords that come here to cry wolf.
Thank you. Thank you. AM Goodrich? Our next three will... Oh, are you here? Thank you. And after Mr. Goodrich, Tarentina, Tarentia, excuse me, Carol, Mimi Mitchell, and Lindsay Bients.
Good evening, board members. So I'm AM Goodrich of Harvard DSA, Democrat Social America. So we have a lot of children in a rent-stabilized building who have been negatively affected by it. So, so yes, we in a housing crisis, but we're in a foreclosure crisis for every building that was affected, anywhere that affected, affected by inflation and of course, and of course, the greedy landlord. This is what happened way back, like, over eight years ago for that E. York Suburban Hill. We got rezoning, fate to build the Blasio administration. And how many rents have a building that is E. York Suburban Hill? We don't know about not a damn thing. So corruption, corruption is no joke. So, like, we struggle making it meet, everybody struggles. Especially, like, we have, like, childcare. Now we dealing with all this migrant crisis, like, oh, where, what country did they come from? Like, like, why are we paying, paying all this bullshit for, for this hotel that we don't benefit for? That's seriously unacceptable! This fun game... Yeah. The AI should be a one-term mayor and a one-term swagger. So we trying to stand up, step up, rise up, real care, English, Spain, Chinese, Russian, Polish, the time that you need to step that game up. So, fight. So, so when we say fight, when we say get back, we say fight back. They say get back, fight back.
Thank you. Tarentia Carroll? Tarentia Carroll? Mimi Mitchell? Is Mimi Mitchell here? Lindsay Bients? Lindsay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Brenz. I am a recent addition to the Crown Heights community. I moved here three years ago, almost exactly. I was very pleased to move to this community. I live in a beautiful rent-stabilized building, 751 St. Mark's Avenue. It's called the Betsy Ross. It's a wonderful building. It has been full of tenant activists since the '70s who were very militant in engaging in rent strike to receive the standards of living that they were accustomed to. So I am very grateful to live in this building with its history of tenant activism and its rent stabilization. I am here to advocate for rent rollback because even with all of these great works that the previous tenants have done, our rent is still becoming unaffordable, and it is not possible to get our landlords, who we have switched landlord-management companies a number of times. No one is addressing the underlying causes of crumbling repairs in our building. We have a facade that leaks water. They'll repair the inside of the building, but they will not repair the facade. This is a landlord problem because they are continually spending money and not fixing a problem. So we want to see a rent rollback. We want to see our buildings adequately maintained. And we also want to see our communities stable. I am a recent transplant here as of three years ago, but many people in my building have lived there for 10, 20, 30, even as high as 40 years. People in my church have lived in this neighborhood. I attend St. George's Episcopal Church in Bedford-Stuyvesant, historically Caribbean and Black American church. People have been attending there for 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70 years. It is a majority senior church, and it is now majority commuter church because the rents have forced people out of this community and out of their rent-stabilized buildings. And so in order to preserve Bedford-Stuyvesant, to preserve Crown Heights, to preserve these neighborhoods, and to stop forcing people away from places where they would like to live, where their families live, where people they love live, we must have a rent rollback. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Iris Nieves, Luz Rosero, and Teresa Westerdahl. Is Iris Nieves here? Luz Rosero? Teresa Westerdahl? Okay, thank you. We'll keep her card ready. Maria De La Rosa? Christine Nicholson? Okay, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Christine Nicholson. I've lived in this community for over 15 years. I attended Clar Barton High School, so this is my community through and through. I've seen the changes. I've seen the gentrification. I'm actually, this is my first time attending a board meeting, so I'm excited to be here. I'm also very sad and disappointed in hearing everyone's testimony. You all know the buildings that we live in. We've lived in them forever. I don't need to talk about repairs. It's all clear. But I do need to talk about advocating for not increasing the rent stabilization and also a rollback as per needed. We don't need another increase. We just had one. I signed the lease myself, so I think that it's commonsensical to you all who seem smart, educated, and economically advanced to do the right thing and not further put us in a deeper crisis than we already are. As a millennial, I'm smack dab in the middle of it, and it definitely seems like there's nowhere to go. Like, the walls are kind of caving in. And I just think that it is mind-boggling. Like, we kind of have to have a brain around this, right? It's really common sense. It's not, like, this is not, like, science. It's science, actually, but it's really just becoming worse and worse. And I just don't understand how, even my friends who are rich and my friends who are poor, they're all complaining, like, no one can even move because everything is just so expensive. So I think I just appeal to you guys to do the right thing, whether or not you can. I just hope that you do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Teresa here? Teresa Westerdahl, please, thank you.
Hello, my name's Teresa Westerdahl. I live in the neighborhood. I serve on Community Board Nine. I live very close by. I am not a tenant. I am a homeowner and have lived here... Oh, I'm a homeowner. I pay a mortgage, and I bought when my daughter was born in 2005, very nearby. And I have been going to hearings for CB9, for the City of Yess Housing Euro Subcommittee Meeting. I went to a DCP hearing this week, and for my community board specifically. And I'm finding it very frightening for what's happening to tenants in my neighborhood. You know, people are, the affordability and the keeping the rent stable is the backbone of our city. Increasing the rent is going to put people on the street. You hear, you hear the problems, right? You hear the problems, and I see it every day. The pressure that is on my neighborhood, that is on the tenants in our neighborhood, landlords doing very divisive undermining things to their apartments, their lives. It's horrible to watch. It's horrible when you see a dumpster come and you see a tenant's stuff get all dumped out. It's horrible when you see a woman crying on the street with her children that she'd been served an eviction notice. She doesn't know what to do. You know, there are people are getting kicked out of their housing. You see, especially Black and Brown people, you see the census, you see the statistics. They're leaving. I mean, I'm a white lady that, you know, has a mortgage, you know, but I'm here to serve my community and listen, and the rent needs to be rolled back or kept the same. That's just my opinion, so good luck, everyone.
Thank you. Our next, thank you. Our next three speakers will be Andrew Botterford, Anthony Beckford, and Jamie Barnes. Is Andrew Botterford here? Okay. Anthony Beckford? Please, thank you.
My name is Anthony Beckford. I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I'm a father, a son, a community advocate. I've lived in this community all my life. I don't remember seeing any of you here, but you're to determine what happens in our community. That right there does not seem right. That right there is not housing justice. That right there is what you call imperialism, and that right there is something that this country's been doing to us for ages, and we will not stand for it in our community. We have been demanding rent rollbacks for years, and instead of listening to us as you're acting to do right now, you keep going against our best interest. The people who built this city, the people whose ancestors bled to make sure that this city continues to run, the folks who still are here fighting to stay in their community as you appease gentrifiers and appease landlords and these corrupt, redney representatives. So I'm here to simply say a few things. Look within yourself. Imagine you being an 80-year-old grandmother with mold on her ceilings, with her grandchildren crying because they see the struggle. They see the intergenerational struggle and trauma that you produce every time you increase rent. That is racism. That is injustice. That is classism, and we will not stand for it anymore. You get appointed, but it's about time that we remove all of you because you do not get appointed for our behalf and our interests. It's time for us to increase the measures upon you because you do not represent us whatsoever. And for the elected officials who want to give us lip service and not action, this is your warning. For the ones who put you into power, we will remove them for power because we, the people, will not stand for this anymore. We are demanded... Don't thank me because I would not say you're welcome. We are here to put a proposal and demands. We want zero increase. We want rent rollbacks. Matter of fact, I'll even give you a number. 35% rent rollbacks to start with. And a 10-year rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Barnes? Please, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm a tenant born and raised here in Brooklyn, New York. I just, I just have a comment, actually, well, actually, questions. One, no more rent increases at all. No, every couple of years, a 1%, 2% and all of that. Also, just completely freeze it. But my question is to the board. Who decided to dismantle rent stabilization for New York City residents by the year 2027? That's what I want to know. Was it the board or the Mayor Adams? Okay, and one last question. So what is the expectation if the rent stabilization is ended in New York City? What, what, what can we expect? Okay, so Mayor Adams is the boss, right? He's your boss. He puts together the board. So don't you guys have any...
If rent's stabilized, if the rent keeps increasing, we are going to end up in the street. That's what's going to happen. So I, I will not vote for any rent increases, and I'm asking my fellow board members to not increase the rent. I am the only rent-stabilized tenant on this board, and I hear your voices.
Thank you.
Okay, one last, one last thing. Thank you for commenting. I appreciate it because I didn't know. And I'm just trying to learn and understand what to expect for, after, when 2027 comes, what's happening in each subsequent mayoral... Mayoral administration. What can we expect as tenants?
Thank you.
I mean, I mean, have they said anything to the board? Like, we'll have something else in place of the board? That's what I really want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Shasta Spicer, Shasta Spicer, Ms. Julia Estherlin, or Estherdin, excuse me, and Carol McDonald. So, Ms. Spicer?
Yes, good evening. My name is Shasta Spicer.
Thank you.
I am a 35-year-old woman. I work, I live in East New York, Brooklyn. And I didn't have anything prepared right tonight. I just came to see what everything was about, and from what I can see, you guys already know what's going on in the buildings, all of the deterioration, all of the, all of the complaints, all of the hard-working people that are trying their best to do what we have to do as, together. Because if we're living and we're paying rent, you guys should be doing what we have to do for us to sustain life, and that's not happening. And one thing that I want to say also, I want to talk to you guys for a moment too, is that what's happening right now is that it feels like it's basically extortion. Because what's happening is that a lot of us are on fixed incomes, and the fixed incomes are way below what is being asked of us. are way below what is being, um, asked of us to, exactly, the cost of living is being too high. What also is happening is that our young people, we're going to college and we're not getting the jobs that we go to college for. We're not even, we're not even making the money that we have in order to help our parents or our families make the rent. And on top of that, our economy is changing, which means that the, the jobs are changing. Our elders are not even able to work because the jobs that are required, they don't even have the training. So now they're gonna have to go back and go train. The younger people probably don't want to do certain of those jobs or can't even get to them because they don't have access. So what I'm asking you guys is to look at all of those things and not just, oh, wait, we need to make money as well because that's a part of it, or we need to do our part as well to be able to even afford the rent. So what I'm asking is for no rent increase, rollbacks, and a freeze on the rent until our economy gets better. Because the economy is not getting any better for any of us and it's doing a disservice to all of us. So if we can work together is what we need to be doing and for anything that we can do to work together, we're willing. But there are things that need to be in place to protect us as well because we are the ones that have been in these communities and contributing the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I don't know if you have my paper there. My name is Saria McNeil. I'm sixty-one years old. I was born nineteen sixty-three. You know, that was a great year, right? Nineteen sixty-three? That was a great year, right? The civil rights movement, all the shit, everything was going down. Well, my mother moved there in this apartment on Clinton Hills in nineteen sixty-six. Okay? And she raised five girls there. I went to PS eleven, which my granddaughter goes there now. I went to Rothschild one thirteen. I went to Erasmus Hall and graduated on time with honors. And then I went to Brooklyn College. And I met Mayor Maria Cuomo when he first ran and he asked me what did I want to be? And I said, I want to be a politician. Well, he said it, but God made it and that's all good. So, um, my apartment is rent stabilized. Of course, we have been tortured. My mother has been tortured for the last ten, fifteen years. They came for me and when they came for me, I came back for them. Okay? I'm, my mother was almost killed in that building in nineteen seventy-seven. She should technically own that apartment because Clinton Hills should have been a mishalama, four hundred, that is, like three ninety-five words. That means that the building was going down and the rent, how they got it together, the landlords got together and the people got together and they took over the building. Now the landlords getting, and after they get their tax credit, then they want to shoot the rent up. So you want me to pay you five thousand dollars? Most people don't even make five thousand. How can they pay you five thousand dollars? So what they do is they have their friends and they get the other tenants who haven't been there the longest. I've been there the longest. I'm not going nowhere. My mother died in that building and she was on the floor for two or three days, not to mention she had a hundred and eighty violations. And they was getting paid by Section Eight and they had the audacity to come and, after two funerals that I had, I went to Brown Memorial and grew up in Brown Memorial. Okay? And I'm still there. And I'm still here in this community. She also started the Carlton Avenue Garden thirty years ago. They got with the people at the garden, they tried to come after me, after my daycare business, after my grandkids. I'm harassing, breaking them out, they did all kinds of stuff, but I'm still here. And I'm going to win because we have power and numbers, not to mention that, this lady here has come out with me to the landlords in the Williamsburg community two years ago and we protested. This is billion-dollar companies. Y'all have trillions of dollars. They are just greedy, they don't give a damn about us and our kids and the future. It's called re-justification. It has to stop. Since that time, two years ago, they bought my whole block and pushed everybody out. But the McNeils are here to stay at the first black salon in there and we are not going anywhere.
Thank you.
Black power is in the house.
Thank you. Ms. Julia Easterlin? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ms. Julia Easterlin. I'm a member of Met Council. I'm here.
Please.
Thirty years, thirty years ago, I joined the Met Council. And I want to know, like I said before, that was at One Police Plaza. How many people there is a tenant on this board? How many peoples a tenant on this board? I asked that thirty years ago at One Police Plaza. I don't hear nobody. How many tenants is on this platform? Only you, honey? Now, the, okay, reason why I ask that, because when you're landlords, I was a landlord too, now I'm a tenant. But thank God that everything so far is no good. My landlord tried to convict me and my brothers three times, but we won the case because God don't love ugly. Now, why I'm saying this because these, that the lady say over there, dead rock, this come to find, I give you four less. The mayor, why are the mayors pointing landlords? What happened to the tenants? They got rights. Okay, they got rights. So I feel, like I said thirty years ago, you should have five tenants and five landlords. Okay? So at least they, at least they would help us out. And then the thing is that these landlord slummies, I had four, all the tenants in our building suffer for two, three years because the man won't put no boiler. Now I'd like to know why that we have to wait three days for some doing heating and hot water. Okay, I want to hear it. I don't hear nobody talking. And why we have to wait? When we call for the three-one-one, that y'all need to get rid of three-one-one because some of them don't know nothing and some of them do know something and they scared. Some will tell me the building department. We called the building department about our building, why we don't have no heat. So some reason they got in there and found out here a whole lot of whys. He got four violations. So we went down there, found out what happened here. And all that time, why we have to wait forty days for them to come in? You got children, you got seniors, what, and you got disabled people. Why you have to wait?
Thank you, ma'am.
Why you have to wait? Forty days for a boiler? And three days to get some heat? Because HPD don't want to do nothing, there's another one.
Thank you.
And inspectors is something else too. I want to know. Why? Not before, you never hear it, rent guideline board. Don't roll back nothing. Get rid of guideline board because y'all didn't have it before. Why you do it now? Because the Mayor Adams, DeBlasio, uh, what's the other one? Bloomberg, all them landlords. So how you expect for us to win anything and y'all go back and do the same thing?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Why is that? I want to know. Y'all didn't answer me. Why? Since you're a board member, y'all the board members, you're supposed to answer the tenant. Why? Because see, I was a landlord, but I feel to help people that need to be helped. I'm not stubborn because my mother, father, my grandmother always said, help people that need help. And I do that, I was a landlord for a long time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Till my father sold out and they wasn't answering to help people, give him heat.
Thank you.
But nobody answered my question. Tenant stated, talk about that.
Thank you.
Okay? But you not answer my question.
Thank you, ma'am.
What you can do for us, since you're board members? Get rid of the guideline board like you did before, get rid of it.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol McDonald. Carol McDonald? Is Carol McDonald here? Okay. Uh, Zaina Davidson? That was the microphone. Our next three speakers will be Zaina Davidson, Jessica Dunn, and Sarah Lazler?
Oh, I'm sorry. My, I'm supposed to put my name on that?
Yes, there's a registration at the front desk. Thank you. But they can, she can still sign up. Just a, just a reminder, um, Liz, just a reminder, if you're here and want to speak, um, we're gonna close the registration desk shortly, so please go out and register now. Thank you, Liz.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ms. McDonald. I live in Bedford-Stuyvesant with one.
Okay, please let the speaker speak. Thank you. Go ahead.
In one of Urban Stragedy Building. I'm sure you guys know who's Urban Stragedy. I lived there for twelve years now. I live at Rats, Roach. I complain and I complain and I complain. No one is listening. This is a big organization. I'm sure you guys heard about Urban Stragedy. They have many, many buildings. They, the, the rent are raising if you don't, if you got a two years or a one year. The rent are raising. Nothing during in those buildings, Urban Stragedy Building. Right now, in front my door, I have a hole. I call them, no one coming out. This is a organization. I'm paying my rent every month. So what should I do? Don't pay the rent? I, I'm a, I'm an hard-working person and I go to work and I pay my rent. Even last night, the building, the, the light in front my, my door was out. I called them yesterday afternoon. I said, hey, my light, my light is out today. When I call, when I call them, the, 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 um, the super didn't come. I said, no, this, she doubt me. Yeah, the super was there. I said, mom, I live there and I'm telling you that, that, um, they think those rent need to be rolled back and stabilized. They don't need to go nowhere because Urban Stragedy not doing anything in, in the building. Please, I'm asking you. I complained, I call, um, um, nine-one-one, I called everything that I could call about this, about this. Next thing, I want to know that they're putting up this, this building, they said it's, um, low, low-income family building. Right now, there's one on Broad, Broadway. I've been on that list for like ten years and no one calling you. Low income, I'm working, low income, and no one calling you. But you see, other people came walking and get right in your neighborhood, right in your neighborhood. You live right there. And you see these buildings are going up and you're putting in for these buildings and you're not getting in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is, is Zaina, is Zaina Davidson here?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zaina Davidson and I'm here standing, pleading for you guys to lower the rent. I'm a single parent with three girls. In last year of the COVID, I'm a healthcare worker. I live in East New York. My rent was seven hundred dollars. The landlord passed away and they sold the house. And the new landlord from seven hundred dollars, I'm paying two thousand dollars. And I have to work double shift, double shift. I leave at six, at six o'clock in the morning and get home at eleven o'clock and Ood's taking care of my child. When the landlord came in there, my daughter is nineteen now, she's in college, she cried, "Mom, how are you gonna do this? It's sad." I'm pleading. No one is supposed to be going through this. I work and imagine I'm going to work and take care of someone else laying in the bed and I leave my three girls with a babysitter. Isn't it sad? Just because I have to pay that rent and I don't want to see my girls then on the street or on homeless. I am begging, get some heart. Let's get some heart. I don't want to go through it. It's hard on me as a parent. I don't make my kids see me cries, but I cry many days. It's sad. I'm begging, please, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jessica Dunn?
Hey, everyone. My name is Jessica and I am a proud member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union and the, and the unfortunate tenant of what, like many of you, experience of a shitty landlord. And yet I love my rent stabilized apartment. Every year, our neighbors stand in front of this board, in front of this group of literal randoms and spill out our pain, our despair. We ask them not to displace us, not to displace our neighbors, the people we love. We get to watch the lady with a bad blowout rolling her eyes, one of the Monopoly men back there getting angrier and angrier, one of the old white guys texting under the table because apparently our stories are too boring for them. We look into their soulless eyes as they decide how much our homes, our families, and our peace of mind is worth. Whatever we say doesn't matter to them. They understand exactly what is happening to us and they do not care. So I'm not here to talk to them. I'm here to talk to you. This is an illegitimate body that deserves none of our attention. We are here to talk to each other. Because until we strengthen our movement, these landlords and the puppets they put on this board are going to continue to win. There are more of us than there are of them and we need to be as organized as they are three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. There are so many organizations in the room today and so if you are not already a part of one, the stakes have never been higher. CHU and our comrades are outside tabling and we are committed to building the power we need to protect our buildings, our blocks, and our neighborhood. This whole system needs to be destroyed. Why should a bunch of random mayoral appointees decide whether or not we're displaced? The only way we win this fight is if we fight together. And so this Saturday, the Crown Heights Tenant Union will be starting to build that power at the Brower Park Library from eleven to five. Join us in this fight. Love these guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah Lazar? Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah. I am a member of Crown Heights Tenant Union. I lived in Crown Heights for about ten years. I am a rent stabilized tenant. Yeah. Oh, wait, they're laughing. Okay, they're having a conversation. I mean, I don't really care about them because they don't matter, right? So what I was gonna say, uh, I was gonna, I was gonna say a whole lot of things. I could talk about how rent is taking one out of every two paychecks from me. I could talk about how my previous rent, my previous apartment was not rent stabilized because they, the rent guidelines were given so many increases that it got deregulated, right? This is a campaign. This is a system where landlords are getting bonuses and bailouts constantly, constantly. And they have never had any sort of accountability. Now, maybe instead of, I plan to talk about a lot of things, but I want to talk about rent control from nineteen twenty, right? Sorry, I'm a dork about this. In nineteen twenty, we got our first rent control in New York City and it was because there were over a decade of rent strikes throughout the city. They only did this because they were afraid of tenants fighting back and causing a ruckus and social upheaval. And this might be the only thing that gets through because these people are not the decision-makers. Eric Adams is the decision-maker, right? And Eric Adams needs to be afraid of us. He is not afraid of us. He cares about getting real estate money. He gets, cares about getting, um, donations to his campaign. He's trying to not go to jail, but whatever. And rent control, the first rent control, it, it allowed for increases of twenty-five percent, but then they changed and they said if a landlord wants an increase, he has to go to court and get permission. He has to prove that he needs it. And they said, you know, maybe an eight percent profitability, whatever. This rent stabilization system was designed to increase your rent with zero concern for what is going on in your lives. And there's a lot going on in all of our lives. I know everybody is rent burdened. And there's a lot going on in all of our lives. I know everybody is rent burdened. I am. You are. Every person. I work in the social safety net. Everybody is going through it and they do not care. And that is how this system is set up.
Thank you.
So maybe somebody needs to lose their job.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Alicia Boyd, Kathy Salerno, and Julia Day. Alicia? Is Alicia here? Alicia? Is this Alicia? Alicia, no, sorry, sir. If you haven't signed up, please make sure you sign up.
Sir, hold on one second.
I'm sorry, sir. If you haven't signed up, please sign up. We have speakers who have been waiting patiently. Please go sign up, sir. We have speakers who have been waiting patiently for their opportunity to speak, sir. Please. Alicia? Thank you. Please.
We speak together. Yeah, we speak together.
Please. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Alicia Boyd.
Thank you.
And I'm a political activist in the community. Born and raised in Brooklyn. You know, this is a shame. We should be ashamed of ourselves to have a board of people who are not tenants. This is a disgrace for them to come into our community and make decisions and they don't even live our experience. But you know who's responsible for this? Eric Adams. You need to get rid of him. You need to get him the fuck out. You need to get him out. 80%, 90% of your rent-stabilized tenants are owned by corporations, right? What are they doing with apartments? They're warehousing them. Are they doing anything about all that warehousing? 100,000 apartments are being warehoused. Everyone here knows. Are you gonna let me?
Sir, please let her speak.
But that's what we deal with all day. We got the homeless. We got the mentally ill. Isn't that our experience, people? Every day, I go and I get accosted by somebody who's not well. And you know why they're not well? Because they live in the fucking streets. Because our city does not give us the housing that we are supposed to get. They tell us lies about affordable fucking housing and it's not fucking affordable. They put towers in our community and tell us that it's gonna be rent-stabilized and it's not, okay? And who's at fault? Your mayor. You need to be organizing to get him the fuck out. I'm sorry. Get him out! Get him out! Throw his ass in the street! Just like we get thrown in the street, throw his ass in the street. This is it, people. Get him out! Because he's the one who's controlling these puppets. He's the one that's saying he does not care about black and brown, white, black. You know, he does not care about us. He does not care about us. He uses his black skin to tell us that he's not racist. He's racist, okay? He knows we are suffering. They've seen the numbers.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have a 94% chance of finding an apartment if we get displaced. 94%! This is a disgrace. The city is a disgrace. And these people are disgraced. And you should curse them out. Because how dare they come into our fucking communities and tell us what they're gonna do to us? They get mobbed by the real estate industry. They get moneyed by the real estate industry. And then they come to us and say, "Oh, we wanna hear you."
Thank you.
Fuck you! Fuck you! Fuck you! Fuck you! Fuck you! Fuck you! Fuck you!
Kathy, is Kathy Salerno here? Thank you. Ms. Salerno? Please, thank you.
Don't start my time yet. Hello, Ms. Smith, Mr. Ehrlich, Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Davidson, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Apple, Mr. Soltran, and Ms. Aquino. I'm a full-time pediatric speech therapist in a rent-stabilized unit. I can no longer make a living as an early intervention speech therapist for children in need, despite the critical need for such clinicians post-COVID because of the rising costs of living. Thousands of children need health care they are not getting because health care providers can't make rent providing those services. So there is a shortage of these public health providers. Now I work in one of the best private clinics there is and I'm really, really, really good. And you all look like parents that would be in my waiting room and I'd be thrilled to work with your children. It's one of the best clinics and it's a private clinic and it's probably only a matter of time until I don't make enough there either. Cities are made of people who must take care of each other. Families must be able to afford both housing and the services they need. The health professionals who serve them must be able to afford to live as well. If public health workers can't live in New York City, there are dire public health consequences. I have worked with preschool children every day for the last 15 years. We often discuss what they want to be when they grow up. It comes up a lot. I'm about to say something cheeky and I hope you will hear it in the spirit it's intended. I hear helping and caregiving professions mentioned a lot when kids say what they want to be when they grow up. Respectfully, I've never heard a child say they want to be a landlord when they grow up. And yet, and yet, and yet landlords must provide the most important care of all, safe, secure, and affordable housing for a healthy and safe city. Do the right thing, care for your city, and keep affordable housing. Keep housing affordable in New York. Don't increase the rent, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Julia Day. Sir, we have a line of people waiting. Julia? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julia. I was born and raised in the Bronx and I moved to Crown Heights last July and I'm a member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union. I grew up in a subsidized neighborhood called the Amalgamated Co-op. I grew up knowing the life me and my family were able to live because my family wasn't burdened by rent. It took me a very long time to repair the notes for my testimony today. After several crossed-out ideas of thinking about how to frame my thoughts, I realized I struggled because I've been reckoning with the fact that this hearing is not about being heard. The testimonies from last year and the rent hike that followed show me that this hearing is a checkbox, a way to claim that this is a democratic process when it isn't and it was never set up to be. The very premise of this board equalizes tenants' ability to survive with landlord profits. Tenants living in rent-subsidized apartments, who make up nearly 30% of all New Yorkers, can count on only two of nine members to consider their needs. The structure of this board assumes the ability for almost a million families to survive is as equal a priority as landlord's ability to turn a profit. And let's not pretend that this is about struggling mom-and-pop landlords either. If it were, I would expect to see this administration taking a stand against corporate landlords. They're not. According to HPD, corporate landlords own 89% of units in the city and are the real corporates putting mom-and-pop landlords out of business. The decisions the Rent Guidelines Board have made under Eric Adams do not reflect the everyday realities of families meeting the cost to survive. Wage increases have not kept up with the rise in rent prices. The Rent Guidelines Board's structures and decisions disproportionately favor corporate landlords at the expense of tenants. This imbalance leads to financial strain and insecurity for nearly a million working families in New York. For a truly democratic process, we need a board that prioritizes the basic human need for housing, ensures fair representation, and addresses the real issues impacting both tenants and working families. Housing is not a commodity.
Thank you. Our next, thank you. Our next three speakers will be Fabiola Abelino, Natalie Nakulik, and Amy Bolton. Is Fabiola here? Thank you. Fabiola Abelino? Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Fabiola Abelino. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fabiola Abelino. Soy residente de Sunset Park. Llevo viviendo seis años en este lugar, en un apartamento de renta estabilizada, pero la cual no se me ha respetado. Good evening. My name is Fabiola Abelino. I'm a resident of Sunset Park. I have been living in a rent-stabilized apartment for six years where I have never been respected. Ya que pago 1,500 al mes de renta y estoy supuesta a pagar 981 dólares. Given that I'm paying $1,500 in rent for a room, but I'm supposed to actually be paying $980. ¿Saben por qué pago 1,500 y no 981? Porque soy víctima de un casero al cual...
Sir, please let her speak. Thank you. Please.
¿Saben por qué pago 1,500 y no 981? Porque soy víctima del casero al cual viendo la necesidad mía como de otras tantas personas debo obtener un lugar donde vivir. Nos rentan los apartamentos al precio que ellos quieren. Do you know why I pay $1,500 instead of $980 for rent? Because I'm a victim of a landlord who does not see the needs that I have and that others have who are looking for a place to live. But he rents the apartments at a price that he wants. Aparte, no hacen reparaciones que necesitamos. Aparte, no hacen reparaciones que necesitamos. Yo como madre soltera y cabeza de familia, me he visto en la necesidad de trabajar los siete días o tener dos trabajos para poder pagar mi renta. And he also does not do the repairs that we need. As a single mother, I am the head of household and I must work up to the seven days a week or have two jobs in order to be able to pay the rent. Por eso es que el día de hoy estoy aquí dando mi testimonio y pidiendo que no aumenten más la renta. Gracias por escucharme. That is why I am here today, providing my testimony and asking that you do not increase the rent. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Natalie Nakulik? Please, go ahead. Thank you. Please, thank you. Go ahead.
All right. It's true. All right. It's true. It's true. So, hi, everyone. My name is Natalie.
Sir, please let her speak.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're all pissed. We know they're not listening. We know. All right.
We fix this by having rent rollback.
Indeed. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Natalie. I'm a proud member of the Crown Heights Tenant Union. I live in a rent-stabilized apartment pretty close to here. And, you know, having a rent-stabilized apartment has really allowed me the stability to know that I can stay in this neighborhood, in this city. But the stability is under attack by the rent increases that are proposed by this board. And, you know, I think we all know that it's been a business strategy of landlords for decades to push out rent-regulated tenants so that they can raise the rent, take the apartments out of rent stabilization, you know, rent them as market rate. This has been a very intentional strategy to displace tenants and particularly here in Crown Heights, you know, displace black tenants. It leads to a loss of desperately needed affordable housing. And these, you know, unconscionable rent increases that are proposed by this board are only going to further this racist agenda of displacement. And this board knows, you know, we all know that people can't afford the rent. Tenant-stabilized tenants can't even afford their food. And further rent increases is gonna lead to more homelessness, people on the streets, less affordable rent, and just an unlivable city. And, you know, I think we've heard this process is illegitimate. It's shameful. They would sit here and listen to all this testimony and still vote to kick people out of their apartments. So the tenant power is here in the room and, yeah, we're gonna keep organizing and fighting back.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy Bolton? Is Amy Bolton here? Thank you. And while Amy's coming down, our next three speakers, excuse me, will be Andrew Botafard, Doria Bolton, and Cheryl Cloud. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Hello. Hi. My name's Amy Bolton. Hi, my name's Amy Bolton. They/them. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant and a tenant organizer here in Brooklyn. And I currently pay more than half of my income on rent. And I have a question for you all. How much do you pay in a percentage of your income on your rent every month? How much percent, what percent do you pay of your income to rent every month? I can wait. This was a question. I would like an answer. All we ask is that we pay a reasonable percentage of our income. We work really hard and we cannot afford to pay more than half of our income. The tenants that I'm working with are living in buildings that have had 35-plus years without having their electricity replaced and they blow sockets by plugging their AC in, okay? People are living in conditions that are not acceptable and they're getting charged more rent because the landlord is putting in new windows that are apparently supposed to be better, but in reality, they're worse and they're letting in the air and they're making things worse, okay? We cannot afford to continue to pay more rent when our income stays at the same. Fuck you!
Thank you. Andrew Botafard? Thank you, Andrew.
Hey, everyone. I'm Andrew Botafard. I'm running for New York Assembly for District 50, for Williamsburg and Greenpoint. But I'm here today because I'm a tenant, just like everyone else here, and my rent is too damn high. It's too damn high and I'm sick and tired of it. We're sick and tired of paying half of our money in rent every single month and it's outrageous and it's got to end. And I have something to tell everyone here and to the board behind us, which is that we live in what is actually the richest city in the entire world. It has the highest GDP of any city in the entire world. And we're being told that we cannot have affordable housing, that landlords have to raise the rent on ordinary people, ordinary working-class people like all of us here who can't afford to pay the rent. It's outrageous. It's horrible. It's unsupportable. It's impossible for us to continue doing this. And you know what? We need change because we need something to change in the politics to change what's happening here. Eric Adams, the mayor of this lovely city, he grew up like a... he grew up like us. And I don't know why he's not fighting for us, but instead fighting for landlords who frankly don't need it. He is a landlord. That's the reason why. That is the reason why, because he is a landlord. And you know what? Housing is a human right, and it needs to be treated as that and not as an investment opportunity. Fight, fight, fight. Housing is a human right. Fight, fight, fight. Housing is a human right. Fight, fight, fight. Housing is a human right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Daria Bolton?
I'm after Daria.
Yeah, Daria Bolton, then Cheryl Cloud. Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Doria Bolton, and I am a rent-stabilized tenant in East Flatbush. And I didn't prepare what I was going to say to you because I'm going to speak to you from my heart in the hopes that you find your heart as you vote on these guidelines. I hear you. This last winter, in winter, my landlord put a hole in my wall to the outside. And do you know what he did? When I called him to tell him that there was a hole in my wall because of what he did, he yelled at me. He yelled at me. Said he could enter my apartment because it was an emergency. That is not right. This is not right. Then do you know what he did? He spilled toxic chemicals in my apartment. My apartment filled with fumes. I could not breathe in there. And on top of being a rent-stabilized tenant, I am a New Yorker with a disability. In the past four years, my disability has gotten worse. I have been able to work less and less for less and less money. I am thankful to have an amazing spouse who can work, but I can't. And because my spouse can work, I can't get on disability. I can't get help for my disability. So, we are stuck paying half of our income in rent to this shithole of an apartment. And you want to raise our rents? Shame. Shame. I'm going to end this by saying, "Cedec, cedec, tirdof. Justice, justice, you shall pursue." Cedec, cedec, tirdof. Justice, justice, you shall pursue. You're welcome for my time.
You want to face the people?
Well, I want to face the people. Hi, everybody. My name is Cheryl. And I'm from HOPE, House of Unorganizers for People Empowerment. This is one of the most serious housing crises that we have ever experienced in our lifetime. Especially in the advent of COVID, et cetera, et cetera, and the economic shutdown. In 2023, the number of homeless was 88,026 in New York City. And in 2024, the number of homeless is 145,567 in New York City. Furthermore, the number of evictions in 2023 were 12,641. And the current number of evictions of people in New York City is... I'm sorry. 14,207 and counting. The current number of vacancies in 2024 are 42,860. Why are all these people in shelters? And the median rent in New York City as I am speaking right now is $3,290. As you can see, the housing crisis has not has not not only worsened, but it has deteriorated due to our politicians and the like. Okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
If the rents in New York City keep escalating out of control with no end in sight, is anybody going to be able to live in New York City? All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
We all need to show some humanity, some humanity for the people. Put yourselves in their position.
Thank you.
If it was happening to you, you would want some humanity shown to you and some justice for the people.
Thank you.
And what we want is a rent rollback. And how in the hell can you people sleep at night? How do you sleep at night knowing that you're doing the people in?
Thank you, ma'am.
Think about what I'm saying to you. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next three speakers. Thank you. Our next three speakers are Renato Bradley, Viola Bibbins, and Judith Douglas.
Unlike my colleagues, I'm not going to turn my back on you, but I'm going to talk to you. As a woman with children, you shouldn't want to go up on our rent. You should see, you should understand our story. As that landlord stood here and told you all about the bricks that was falling outside his house, what about the water that's running down in my basement, in my apartment? What about the ceiling that's falling down in people bathrooms? It's not that we don't want to pay our rent. We can't afford to pay our rent. Y'all keep going up on the rent more and more and more and more? When y'all going to give us a break? When y'all going to give us a break? Y'all see these senior citizens in here? They got to pay for medicine. You got to pay light. You got to pay gas. You got to pay cable. People got to pay for their kids to be taken care of. And what about food? We can't do that because our rent is too damn high. The lady told you all about urban strategy. I know urban strategy firsthand. My sister lived in an urban strategy building. For six years, my sister been asking them to fix this hole in her ceiling in her bathroom. My sister have a son that has traumatic brain injury. He had, my sister have to make sure she's in the bathroom with him so the ceiling don't fall out on his head. My sister had to threaten them to call the firemen for them to come put a lock on her door. But every month like clockwork, they want the rent. Last year, y'all went up on the rent. This year, y'all shaking your heads and y'all saying okay. But what we saying don't mean a damn thing to you. You going to go home tonight and you going to try to sleep well while we go home and worry about how the hell we going to live? If the government... I listen to the news. Don't thank me. Don't rush me. Because this is my time. Because this is my life. And this is where I live. And I work very hard to pay my rent. Okay? Not only that, could you imagine being a rent-stabilized person on Section 8? That's the worst. Because when the landlord was telling you all about the bricks falling out the thing, he didn't tell you all y'all going to raise our rent. And he going to get MCIs for that, too. So, as y'all raise the rent and he get $600 more rent, we still paying for his bricks. Where we going to get a break? We walking around in clothes with holes in them because we can't afford nothing else. We walking around with slippers because we can't afford. Come on now. It's time for this shit to stop.
Thank you.
It's time.
Thank you.
And you as a woman, you should say yes.
Thank you.
No, she can't.
Thank you, ma'am.
She can't, but it's all right. No, don't rush me, I said.
Ma'am, we have a number of speakers.
No, I don't care.
I understand that, ma'am. We have a number of speakers.
I'm going to say what I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to say what I have to say because we come here year after year crying and begging and pleading when it's us that carry this damn city on our backs. It's us that works in y'all fast-food restaurants. It's us that picking up the shit. But y'all don't care because y'all just want to say okay. You just want to say thank you. That I'm taking somebody's time. But that somebody's time I'm taking is down with me. So, she don't care if I take her time because she still going to come. And she still going to speak. And we still got to say what we got to say because I came here for business.
Ma'am, sir.
I didn't come here for the BS. I ain't come here to hear like y'all did last time. We walked out the door and y'all still talking about y'all going up on the rent. And then we hear the mayor talking about 6% ain't right. All he want to say is he sexy. It ain't sexy. It ain't sexy that you evicted us.
Tell me the problem.
If you go up... If you go up one red penny, if you go up one red penny on most of these people renting here, we going to be evicted. Where can we come live with you? Can we come live with you?
Ma'am, we have a number of speakers this evening. I know you have much to say.
We can go in with our dog, but they ain't got enough room for us neither. So, can we come live with y'all? Because I need a place to go. Because I don't know no place. I don't know no place but Brooklyn. I've been in Brooklyn all my life. Where I'm going to go? Tell me.
Ma'am, are you done? Thank you.
The rent is too damn high.
I appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
If you don't give us a rent rollback or you don't give us zero rent hikes because little Kingston...
Ma'am, we have a number of speakers. I know, understand, ma'am, but we do have a number of speakers.
They got a 15% rent rollback.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Viola Bibbins. Is Viola Bibbins here? Viola Bibbins? Viola Bib... All right. Thank you. Thank you. We would like to hear from our next speaker. Viola, thank you. Please, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Viola, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Viola Bibbins Straker. I had to get married a second time because I couldn't afford the rent. I just want to say that I'm from the Caribbean and I've been living in Brooklyn in that same apartment for 47 years. I used to be so scared of the landlord because he treated me like shit. He would, if I plugged anything in, the lights would go off. I had to go downstairs, come back upstairs. My kids would hang out the window and say, "Mommy, it's on." And then I'd come back upstairs again. This is how he treated me and he made you all stinking rich. He made you all stinking rich. Do you all ever donate money to the homeless mental health people? People out there with mental health problems sleeping on sidewalks. Do you all ever go see them? You all ever see the mental health people? They, after they made you so rich, that my landlord is dead now. Just like everybody else, we all are going to die and leave whatever money that we have. So, all the money that you're gorging from us for rent, for rent, for rent, for rent, you all are going to die and leave that damn money.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Our next three speakers. Thank you. Will be Judith Douglas? And then Ronald St. Flor and Shawnee Cusale. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, congregation. So, today I'm here to support all the other tenants regarding the high rent. We all work hard. We know what that feel like. We come from generation to generation. So, my name is Judith Douglas, and I'm a tenant of a rent-stabilized building in Brooklyn at 249 East 37th Street. I know you're representing a landlord, but you also have a heart. And you have to really go deep within yourself to understand our pain and our living situation because we are living it. Your situation might be different. You might have your luxury apartment, one of those Trump building. I don't know. But we don't have that luxury. We open our door on our own. We don't have nobody to do it for us. You guys' salary probably much better than ours. So, you can afford those kind of luxury life. But we are talking about rare situation if you have never been through it. Each year, we come to this panel, and my members, if I'm not here, to discuss this rent increase. It's like a journey in life that none of us should be doing every year. We have passed through a pandemic. We see how many people pass on. They have money, but they couldn't save themselves. Okay? There's no... Okay, it's no, they may not even get into the polygates. Because money doesn't really um, nothing up there. You understand? Some of, so many of us are lucky to survive and we're here. And we're here to tell our story. No one should be working three, four and five jobs to survive. When you rent an apartment, it's a contract. And every time you renew a lease, that contract is renewed. And when the contract is renewed, it is the landlord responsibility to make sure everything in that apartment is upkeep. Every tenant has a right to live in a peaceful, quiet um environment.
Thank you ma'am.
Free from, free from noise, free from pets, um, free from rodents and mice.
Yes, thank you ma'am, thank you.
Free from people coming in the building just because there is, there is no proper lock on the door. You understand me?
Yes, thank you ma'am.
Because we all have family in the building.
I understand.
All of us, we have that security blanket.
Thank you.
We need to feel safe. And when you have buildings that don't protect the tenants, but every year they put you into a contract, it's not fair. And a lot of times.
Thank you ma'am, we have a number of speakers. Thank you ma'am.
The contract that they put, put you into. The contract that they put you into, it's not like you wanna sign it, but they forced you to sign it and it's not fair. If you have an apartment and you're working with the city, the city should take measures to make sure those apartments are always upkeep. But the city also failing us too.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
The landlord get a 421A tax break for how many years? How many years? 50, 25, 30 years. We get nothing. Okay?
Thank you.
They're on the stock market, we are not. Huh? They sending people to do the work. Look recently, they sent someone to do some work in my kitchen. The guy did the work, he put on brand new tiles, but the floor was sinking, he covered it up with the tiles. When he did that, few months, few weeks after, the floor was sinking again. They came back, they rip up the entire floor. They put down piece of wood. And they put some new tiles. You know what happened again?
Ma'am, we have a number of speakers, please try to bring your testimony to a close. Thank you.
Guys, look at everything that we are going through. We cannot be just working for rent. We need, we need, we need some kinda compensation. We need to freeze the rent for five years. The landlord already making money.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you.
We have family to feed, so we need rent rollback.
Thank you ma'am.
Rent rollback is the only thing that we can survive on right now. And if you guys have a heart and a soul, you can dip deep and ready, make it work for us. Because we all are human beings and in the end of the day, we are going six feet down.
Thank you. Thank you. Ronald, Ronald St. Flor, please.
My name is Ronald St. Flor.
Thank you.
I live 1402, stayed in place for more 15 years. And I have a lot of problem in my apartment. I went to the court, judge gave me other two choco's, they don't care about me. Now God said, hope, now help me. Sir, I have a cabinet more than 20 years. You have mold, I have four children. It's still, I complain, I call the landlord. I see the fish in my bathroom. He came, he sent, he make picture, he never come back, or the ceiling fell on my head. Not fair. And then if you see now, my cabinet still more than 20 years is, the door can't open, a mold ceiling side. I have still a. Licking. No stove. Not fair. Please, we need justice. We need talk to woman, give me justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Shawnee Kusali, Monica Walker and Scott Hutchins.
You got it. My name is Shawnee. I'll talk to you guys. Hey y'all. Hi. Hi guys. My name is Shawnee and I've been a tenant my whole life. I was raised in a small apartment building and once the landlord wasn't able to keep the building, it got passed off to some randoms. And slowly but surely, the lack of repairs led to total destruction of the apartment. Uh, water damage coming from the radiator literally caused the walls to start peeling. It was like the apartment was melting. It was insane. Currently I live in Ocean Hill and I like my neighborhood. I'm part of the community garden over there. I'm very close to the train. I wanna stay where I'm at. But no matter what living situation I have, there's always a fucking problem. There's always a fucking problem. It doesn't matter what building I'm in, it doesn't matter what neighborhood I'm in. Every time I'm in an apartment building where we have some slumlord getting rich off of the rent that I'm paying. Working three jobs to pay. Working three jobs on top of that volunteering on the weekend just so I can have food in my fucking kitchen. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous how much effort we have to put into maintaining shelter. It's ridiculous how precarious these situations are. It's ridiculous how rich you can get by having subs, owning substandard housing for umpteen amount of people. It's ridiculous that no matter how bad it gets, this board decides per, rent increases in perpetuity is the only thing that makes sense to make things better. It doesn't make it better, we know that, they know that. And at this point, they know that we know that. That's right. It's like a fucking insidious dance that we are doing. Where we're trying to prove that this doesn't work and they say, oh, but in order to make things work, we gotta keep raising it. It's insidious. It's insidious. You think you'll be protected when there's rivers of homeless people where everything is in destruction? You think that you're gonna live peaceful lives? You think your ivory tower is so far away? I hope you struggle to sleep. I hope you struggle to sleep. I hope you have low self-esteem. I hope your children think you're all frauds. I hope you have terrible relationships. I hope you have any modicum of the problems your board inflicts on the everyday working class tenant.
Thank you ma'am.
Fuck you very much.
Monica Williams? Is Monica Williams here? Is Monica Williams here? Thank you.
My name Monisa is not Monica.
Sorry.
Um, yeah. They're not, they're, maybe those two. But them, cause that's not even a board member and the other two not here, it's supposed to be nine, nine board members in. Two of them don't give a fuck to come to this vote. Two of them don't give a fuck, cause who the fuck is that? But um, but um. Right? He was there, now he's there. But um, but um, I lived in Brooklyn all my life, right? So I want y'all to know that I lived in this building for almost 11 years. The landlord does not fix anything, not a thing, like. It, it's so horrible. I lived with roaches, rats, mice. I still live with these problems. As a tenant organizer in a tenant in Brooklyn, you don't care, stop shaking your head. But um, so um, I lived with mold for very long. And I also, he never like cleaned the hallway, so think about it, COVID happened. And everything is supposed to be clean daily. He never cleaned the hallway, he never gave us a safe, escape from this disease that was out here. Also, also it's like as well as tenants is paying their rents. And, and trying to increase like they did last year, they kept, they sat up there, they said they was gonna increase the rent. And they lied, just these the same motherfuckers that lied last year. They the same motherfuckers that decreased their decision to fucking let the rent be increased. Cause they, they can't fight, all of them by themselves. They can't do it. Y'all are shitty, but, but, but I don't, right? So I don't think that I should be paying an increase of rent if my neighborhood, Bronzeville, have never upgraded since I've been living there. I live in shambles, we have cops everywhere, there's crime everywhere. But they're raising the rent across the tri-state area. It doesn't, it doesn't matter, right? It doesn't matter. So it feel like I'm battling or losing battle. I, I'm a tenant organizer and I could barely pay my fucking rent. And they're about to increase it right now, right? So I, I had this speech, I had to forget, forget what I had on this paper, cause it don't even make sense. Cause it's not like they're gonna listen anyway. It's not like they're gonna care anyway. All I, all I can say is, you know what, you could tell your friend, Mayor Adams, fuck him. Cause that, cause I know he's close friend with, with you, you could tell him, fuck him. And fuck you guys, cause, cause you guys don't give a fuck about nobody. Only those two tenant members actually clear. And last year, you didn't even give him a fucking decision to speak. He gonna say shit.
Our next three speakers are Scott Hutchins, JD Morellos and Deborah Fuchang.
Yes, thank you. My name is Scott Hutchins. I moved here 20 years ago. Uh, to earn a master's degree from the College of Staten Island. I have a master's degree. 2012, I became homeless. Yeah, with a master's degree, I became homeless. Spent eight years in the frigging shelter system. Now I'm living in an apartment on City Phipps. And of course that gets affected, it's, it's considered rent stabilized, cause it's 421A. And, and so the rent keeps getting raised every year, even though I was homeless. So it's basically leaching off the taxpayers because it's through City Phipps, so the, so the city's paying for my, most of my rent, not all of it. Um, so you know how much it would cost for me to live in this apartment? $72,000. It's tiny. I was evicted from an apartment in the Bronx that was bigger. I mean, this does have built-in air condition, but the air condition's leaked and destroyed a bunch of my books. There are roaches and this place was only built in 2018. There shouldn't be any of that crap. There, the place gets summons all the time because, because they're not putting the garbage out properly. So you people have millions of dollars to lobby and put these stupid damn public service announcements saying how you need more money. You don't need more money. If you can afford to make this TV advertising to tell people that you need to raise rent stabilized people's rent, you don't need the money. And so you may know, I used to run for office as a Green. You can't do that anymore, cause these fucking tyrants up in Albany decided to make it much harder for regular people to run. There's no way to get on the frigging ballot unless you can hire people to go get signatures for you, because they raised the signature count. So nobody who's a real person, who's not some wealthy billionaire can, can run for office anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. JD Morellos? Is JD Morellos here? Deborah Fuchang? Deborah, thank you.
Hi everyone. It's my first time at one of these things and I'm not sure what you do, so I'm here to ask some questions. You're, you're supposed to be deciding on this amount of the rent increase. That's what you do. And the board, this is a board that decides on this and it me, it consists of, could you just help me with this? Who is represented, what percentage? I don't know and I don't understand. Could, could you tell me, um, well, could you tell me who you are? Everyone comes here, oh, I, I guess I should say who I am. Well, my name is Deborah Fuchang. I lived in Crown Heights for nearly 40 years in two different apartment buildings. I currently live on Washington Avenue. I love where I live. Um, my husband and I stayed there. It's over 25 years, just over 25 years, we've been there. There's been a lot of shifting. But we've had to put up with most of what everyone else said here. I agree with it. And lately it's increased more. All the services are lack thereof that everyone has been complaining about. We have experienced in it and now we are experiencing it even more so as we get older and we move into this age. I am 65 years old. I just turned 65 years old. I am not able to get the work that I used to do anymore and these are the things that are happening. But I'm asking you this question because I really need to know what this board, what's the name of the board? What does it, what, what is, what do you do? And what's the basis upon which you, you, you increase the rent? You know? I'm not getting any response from you, but I, I was told that this is a forum where you can come and ask the question. But I don't hear any comments except from you and I need to know what, what is, what is the basis on which you, on which you increase the rent? No, please, please, I just, I need to know this. Please, can somebody just tell me what is going on? How do you, how do you decide on what to increase? How do you come to that conclusion? How do you?
So this is the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. It's comprised of nine members, all appointed by the mayor. And it's supposed to, it's supposed to set rental adjustments, not, not necessarily increases. Although it seems like every year that the rent, it does increase. Um, and it, it's because the board looks at a bunch of data and over the years, they wind up rent, increasing rents more times than not. And so that's why we are here. There's a series of hearings to then vote on an increase. They've already decided that they're going to increase your rent at least 2% because of the preliminary vote that occurred back in May. And so there will be a final vote on that number in, on June 17th. And so just to answer, to answer your question, that is why we're here.
So.
Thank you Adon.
Thank you, but um, so um, but the increases are supposed to be based on something. We are in, we are at a time right now where, where, where the, where people are not able to work anymore. They lose, a lot of the jobs that we did are now gone. Uh, some of them are gone remote and they've just gone away because of how things have changed. You know that, I don't need to tell you that. But um, the, the basis on which you increase the rent, there must be some basis. Because I am aware that all these, that all these landlords have been getting certain benefits throughout the COVID. That the tenants were not able, that the tenants were not privy to or did not get it. Tax credit, whatever it is you call it. But also too, this is a time when.
Thank you ma'am.
The economy is really, it's just difficult. This is what it is. It's, it's what's going on right now. Inflation is high, even, even for those of us who were looking to move out, like us, to move into our own homes. It's difficult because of the increases in, in um, the interest rate and the real, the prices of that. It's something that's not gonna happen. So I don't understand, I still don't understand why you would want to increase, I, why you would want to be increasing it at a time when things are so difficult for people.
Appreciate that ma'am, thank you.
It is very difficult for, for us right now. Everyone in here that is speaking, I hear everyone's voice and I hear it's, it's what's happening to us at the time. Down to the ridiculous. I know you're not here to listen to what's going on in people's apartment individually. So this is why I came with the question, what's the basis on which you, how you decide that? How do you decide what to increase the rent by? And I keep saying increase. This young man corrected me because that's all it's been over the years. And there is nothing that comes back to the tenant, even though we are living in these conditions and continue to live in these conditions under reduced income. And I'm not using the COVID as an excuse. And I'm not using the COVID as an excuse, as most people have been using the government and everyone else is using COVID as an excuse, but COVID did come about. However it did come about, it's very questionable about this, but, you know, COVID came, and now we have the effect of COVID that is affecting all of us. And right in the middle of that, the rent had increased the last two years since that. It is something that was totally unexpected. I don't, I need to understand. How do you decide on that? What do you do? I need an answer, please, can you tell me something? Can anybody tell me something, how you decide on that? Are you not allowed to answer questions?
Thank you, I'm happy to speak later, but ma'am, we, thank you ma'am.
So, so, no, 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 I, because I want to know, you know, how do you decide on it? You did not even answer the composition of the board.
Thank you ma'am.
You know, I know this, I heard this young lady here said that she was the only tenant representative or something to that, but I don't understand.
The board has a website, ma'am. The board has a website also that you could consult, but I'm also happy to speak to you after to comprise the board. But this beeping is a timer, and each person
I, I,
Thank you ma'am. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I understand, but I'm not
We can get you more information, ma'am, thank you. But this is not the forum for that, thank you ma'am.
So I cannot get any, you will not be able to answer any of my questions now?
We can get you more information, ma'am, thank you.
We can certainly get you more information.
We can get you more information, ma'am.
Yeah, point.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you ma'am, thank you.
Okay, just one last question before I leave. I don't understand. What is the purpose of the meeting? What are you, why are you here?
We are here ma'am, to hear from you.
To hear from us?
To hear from you, yes.
So, yes, but, so to hear from us, but not to answer questions?
That's correct ma'am.
You are not allowed to answer questions?
We have a number of speakers we wanted to hear from, and we want to make sure that we do.
No, I understand that, but the question means you can't answer any questions?
Thank you ma'am, we're happy to give you more information after the meeting.
All right, is there some place that I can submit my questions to you?
Absolutely. Through the, we'll come talk to you, soon as the hearing's over, we'll give you the information.
Oh, you're gonna talk to me afterwards?
Absolutely, we're happy to give you where you can submit your questions, thank you. Thank you ma'am, thank you. Our next speaker, thank you ma'am.
I am disappointed because I haven't gotten any question, and I hope that you will answer.
Thank you ma'am. Our next speaker is Mildred Walters. Mildred, Mildred Walters.
I don't know if I have anything to say based on what everybody else has said tonight, because it's the same thing I'm coming up here to say all over. The lady asks question, and she don't get any answer, so where do we go? Where are we going? You know, and it's not, everybody can read website, this is what she's asking. You're gonna raise the rent, so there must be a motive. Yes, there's a motive to put money in your pocket, but also we want to know what are the criteria for you to raise the rent? What are you raising the rent for? I was at my apartment, I stayed there for twenty, forty years. And you know what, sister dear? I'm calling everybody sister and brother dear now. You know what happened? I have to fix my apartment. Every year, everything happened in there. I have to fix it, I pay money to fix it, because I told you guys already that one of the landlord came in the apartment before Chestnut, and said they like to rent their, the West Indians, their apartment, because West Indians work and they can fix apartment. And I did that because I thought that was the best thing I know until Hope come in. If Hope never come in, I would not know that I did not have to fix my whole apartment. I have to mop the floor. I have to kill rat, and make up concussion for rat. I make rat poison for the whole building, fourteen oh eight and fourteen oh two. And I get my, the tenants in fourteen oh eight, fourteen oh two, to fix their apartment, we used to pay people, husbands, who work, and we know little thing to how to fix it, and they fixed those two apartment. We are taking those two apartment from when we used to peek down in other people's apartment, seeing they having good sex. And we used to be there watching them downstairs. And we fixed those apartment until the apartment reached to the point now that they are telling us, we said, "No sir." Who come in and said, "We don't have to fix the apartment." You know what we have to do? Now they said, the thing that they are saying to us now, we started to hold our rent. Rent strike, and we really work with it. Come on man, come on!
Thank you ma'am.
Come on! Hey, nobody not gonna stop me, because for forty years, my mouth was closed. Forty years I see they put tenants out. Forty years I watch people running with baby and everything thrown out on the street. Forty years, I saw people climbing up on fire, escape with a lock on it. I've seen forty years, people living on the rooftop. Forty years, I seen it all. We fixed our apartment. We fixed our apartment. And now you know what they are saying to us? You know what they are saying to us? When they came in my apartment, two weeks ago, he said, "You have a very nice apartment." I said, "I fix it." But they were collecting the rent all these years, because you know I could not stay in there without paying the rent. I fix it, because you know what else I'm gonna do? I want to live there. I'm human being, I want to live like human. We sweep, we clean place, we come from the West Indian. We like our place to be clean and live like human. Yes, we do it. I'm speaking for myself, I'm speaking for most of the people on the thing. So it's time for us now, since we have something, since we understand that we have hope, we have other organizations and a thing like that, we ain't giving them one more inch of our time. This is the last year we giving them this time. We not giving them no more, we cannot do it ourselves. We have a voice. We have a voice, so we have to get together, right? We have to get together, they ain't care. That's not bothering them.
Thank you.
They don't pay that no mind. Better, you understand me? Before so we say we
Thank you ma'am, thank you.
You understand me? So we not, nobody don't thank me, because I know you don't thank me. I know you don't thank me.
I do ma'am, thank you.
That sarcasm, and don't believe that all of that we are stupid. We are not stupid, the only thing that we are bawling out, we are bawling out. And saying we not gonna let no more landlord take us for idiot. That's what we call it, idiot. No more landlord gonna take us for idiot. We gonna stand up man, we gonna fight. Come on brethren. Fight! Come on brethren, fight! We fighting, we fighting. And we must increase. Rent roll back man, rent roll back. When we fix, come on! Come on! Come on, we have a voice, we have a voice, we have a voice, we have a voice. We have a voice, don't let nobody thank you, they thanking you for the dollars that you paid them. We are not idiot, we not stupid. They are thanking you for feeding them. They call us feeders. That's what they call us, you know, feeders, feeders, because we feeding them. Yes, and call we idiots. We have to fight, come on brethren, all of us. All of us. All of us man, come on, come on, there's something more we can do. Get together. If it work for me, I am now on rent strike for two years now, I never feel anyway. I have to give them my rent, because I know if you have, if you put a roof over my head, I'm gonna pay you. I'm gonna pay you if you put a good roof over my head. Fine, I'm gonna pay you. I don't mind paying my money, because I work for it, and I work to pay you. But if you're not putting any room, giving me garbage house to sleep in, a window open, and come and fix my, you know what they do to fix the wall, the sheet rock wall? Duck tape! Duck tape! Duck tape! Duck tape, duck tape. Like me a idiot, me know sheet rock from duck tape. I know sheet rock from duck tape. I know it, I'm not that stupid. So when you coming and still telling me thanking me for do it, clean you. With my dollar?
Thank you ma'am, thank you, thank you.
And every time you say thanking, I want to hold the mic more. Because that sarcasm, sarcasm man, stupidness, think us like we are idiots. So, come on man, we have to do something better. You sit there and talking about your family member is there not getting any food, you can't even eat food. You know how many times, you know how many times I make a choice over my medication and paying the rent? You know how many times? Come on man, come on. So what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Rent roll back! Rent roll back! Come on man! Come on man, come on! Rent roll back man, roll back the rent man. Roll it back!
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
I waited, I waited to speak.
We are adjourned.
I waited to speak.
I'm sorry.